...of the Lancaster County Planning Commission, February 18th. I'm gonna call the roll and then I'm gonna hand it over to Allison Harden, our director. Okay. Jason Cavalier?
Here.
Lynette Henson?
Here.
Judyanna Tinklinburg?
Here.
Michelle Richards?
Here.
Shelley Henson?
Here.
And Frances Lou?
Here.
Okay, I'm handing it over to Allison.
So this is for about two minutes that I've talked about when we need to elect officers. For the, before we get to approval of the agenda, we need to elect a chair and a vice chair. Our chairperson has resigned and has been appointed to another board, and before that we had another resignation in the Indianland with our vice chair, so we have two vacancies. So what I will do is I will open up the floor for nominations, first for the, for the chairperson, then for the vice chairperson. Anybody that has a nomination makes a nomination, the nomination needs a second. We ask then if the person that's nominated is willing to serve. We ask for any other nominations. If there are not any, we'll ask for a motion to close the floor, and we'll repeat that process for vice chair. We can do it in about 45 seconds to a minute if we got it, unless there's a, unless there is a discussion in a campaign. So, I need a motion to open the floor for nominations for chairperson, please.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. Need a second for that.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Henson. So the floor is now open for nominations for chairperson.
I nominate Jason, excuse me.
Yes, Ms. Henson.
I was just gonna say I nominate Jason.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sheila Henson. And second?
I second it.
Ms. Richards? Mr. Cavalier, if you are elected, are you willing to serve as chairperson?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations from the floor for chairperson? If there are no other nominations for chairperson, then I need a motion to close the floor.
So motioned.
Ms. Richards, and I need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Henson, Ms. Sheila Henson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations, Mr. Cavalier. While you are, while I'm doing vice chair, you can shove, shovel off into the middle.
And I would just like to note, we did not elect him just because he's the only man. All of the women on this board were perfectly capable of doing it.
Oh, I know.
I wasn't.
Thank you. So now we need to have a motion to open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
Motion.
Thank you, sir. And I need a second?
I second it.
Thank you, ma'am, Ms. Tinklinburg. All right, now we need a motion, or I need a nomination from the floor for vice chair.
Nominate Shelley.
Okay, Ms. Henson nominates Shelley. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Tinklinburg, seconds. Ms. Richards, if you are elected vice chair, are you willing to serve? Yes, I am. Thank you very much. Any other nominations from the floor? There being none, I need a motion to close the floor, please.
Motion to close.
Thank you. And second from Ms. Henson. Okay, Ms. Lynette Henson seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Your new officers are Mr. Jason Cavalier's chairperson and Ms. Shelley Richards' vice chair. And I turn the meeting over to Mr. Richards, uh, excuse me, Mr. Cavalier. Sorry.
I got her all shook up.
Feeling more like a woman than I should have maybe. Welcome, everyone, to the Lancaster County Planning Commission meeting. Thank you all for putting me in this seat. If everyone in the room would rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd all remain standing for one more moment for me, please. Grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and the serenity to know the difference. Amen. All righty. First thing, commissioners, we need to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So motioned.
Second? Show of hands for approval. Agenda passes unanimous. Our next item is approval of minutes from past meetings. The first is for December 17th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Show of hands to approve. Motion passes. Five, four, one abstaining. The next one is January 9th, 2025, workshop minutes. A motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Show of hands to approve. Motion passes. Two abstaining. I apologize, I had it wrong last time. Ms. Lynette Henson, I didn't see you down there. Next one is February 6th, 2025, workshop minutes. A motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Show of hands. Unanimous. Motion approved. And then we'll go to citizens' comments.
We'll move on. First item now in old business is text amendment 2024-2368, Thomas Retreat Center use.
Thank you, sir. This is an application by Adam Thomas for a text amendment, creating a new use definition and regulations for a retreat center in the Lancaster County Unified Development Ordinance. This is a continuation of the discussion that you had in December. Any other clerical issues we need? Yes, ma'am.
The last time this applicant appeared before the planning commission, I spoke, and I have nothing to add, and I am going to recuse myself.
Okay. So let the record show that Ms. Lou is recusing herself. Have you turned in a slip to the? Okay, thank you.
In a moment, yes.
Yes, ma'am. So I'll wait until you've had the time to leave the dais and go into the admin conference room.
Ms. Harden?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. While she's doing that, if you don't mind waiting a few moments anyway, it seems that there's technical issues outside and it's not being streamed out there. Matthew's going to get an alternate computer to fix that issue.
Is Matthew already left for downstairs? Mr. Cavalier, while we're waiting for the stream, may I? I know this is a very odd request, but I would like to help speed this along. Could we have a two-minute pause or recess so that we can get the, the IT set up in the...
Motion for recess, two minutes.
I promise you it won't take that long.
Anyone?
All right.
Oh, I second it.
Okay.
Two minutes. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Allison.
Well, I do need you to, motion back in. A motion to come out of recess.
Do I hear a motion to come out of recess?
Motion to come out of recess. Second.
Thank you, and...
Ollie.
Oh, yeah. Show of hands.
Yes.
There we go.
Well done. So this is the retreat center. This is a continuation, you're doing fantastic, of the discussion. It's gonna be very difficult to see this on the screen, but we did want to make sure that we addressed the changes since the first reading. At the first reading, we discussed, or not first reading, excuse me, for the first time we talked about it. At the time, we discussed some of the uses that were in the list, and there were some questions by planning commissioners why we included some of the uses in the event space. These were recommended by staff for future applicants, because when someone comes up and says, "I want to do a new use," we look at what they'd like to do, but we also look at what has been asked for in the past from other applicants or from other people in the county. And in the county, there are a lot of requests or a lot of interest in using farms as wedding venues, so wedding facilities, including spa services for the day of or the day before, have been requested by others. We thought it was a good fit for this because other communities that have regulations for event facilities can have this type of use in there. Accessory uses, those are uses that are not primary. They're things that have to, that, that could be included on the property but have to be subject to the primary use. And those were coin-operated laundry and associated retail uses. The coin-operated laundry was because there are opportunities for folks to get out and play and get dirty and muddy, and if they wanted to minimize their packing and maybe wash their clothes, the applicant would, or anybody in the future, would have an opportunity to provide that on a coin-operated system rather than a free system. But if you'd like to delete that, that's totally something that you would be open to recommending. And then the associate retail uses. The reason we put that in as associated is because we don't want it to become a primary use on a event facility. We don't want it to become a corner store or a Quick Mart where people turn it into a convenience store. That, any retail uses on the event facility should be geared toward the clientele for the event. If we eliminate all associated retail uses, then we were not gonna let them sell a T-shirt, we're not gonna let them sell bug spray, they're not gonna let them sell, you know, ice cream and the like. We need to have some kind of retail use as a associate, but when, but it is a blanket title, I will give you that, that associated retail uses. If we use the word "associated," that means it really has to be tied into the main use. The applicant's request also requested to have accommodations on the site in different forms. We've worked with the applicant before. The, the history in your staff report says that this was First Amendment proposed to the campsite use that we have in our code already. This, the campsite wasn't a good fit for the applicant's vision, so this is why he's come back with an event facility. And we have provided language for the types of accommodations so that there is some kind of governance to understand what they mean and what they're for. The main building would be the site of the primary use of the retreat center. It may include operations from the center, dining facilities, kitchen equipment, meeting, worship event, or activity space, spa therapy, gym facilities, laundry facilities, business centers, bathrooms, and facilities to support the uses, and rooms for overnight accommodations in the main building. The accessory buildings would be those that contain a use or accessory use in support of the retreat. Think maintenance sheds, think pool, equipment rooms, think garages, things like that. There were three versions of lodging in the description. Lodge and overnight accommodations with individual rooms for guests. Those are minimum, maximum of 12 rooms for accommodations. These would be places where you would have rooms available, but also kitchen facilities or small group, group gathering spaces in the facility as well. Tiny houses, there are lots of, of recreational centers that bring in tiny houses and create tiny house environments for folks to stay the night in. These would be under the guidelines of the ICC, the International Code Council. This would be the definition of tiny house. If they're using it, would have to also meet the standards under the International Code Council for tiny house when they're being built. The maximum of five guests per tiny house. And then a cabin is a minimal, an overnight accommodation for guests. Think of your rustic camp setting, two or three bunks in a stack, and a room where you have a large communal bathroom, and maybe some kitchen facilities. This would also be established by ICC requirements of square feet per person. Those are the proposed different types of lodging under this option that the applicant has discussed with the staff. For the accommodations recommendations from staff, we recommend the maximum cabins or tiny homes per acre of usable space to be one. We originally started that out with two, but because we have the lodges in there as well, we were changing our recommendation down to one. The maximum number of main buildings would be one per 10 acres, maximum number of lodges would be one per five acres. And for a 20-acre facility with all acres being usable space, this would max out at 20 cabins and/or tiny homes, four lodges, and two main buildings. For the parking, this is another place where we had a separation of thoughts. Staff recommended one parking space per 80 square feet of main assembly hall because that is the, the parking requirement we have for worship areas. We also recommended one space per cabin, one space per tiny house, and one space per transient accommodation in the lodge. ADA requirements will make that, the, the distance to the, the operation would have to be followed under ICC. And the parking could be housed in the same parking lot, so if you wanted to have a giant parking lot and then have folks walk down to their cabins, or golf cart down to their cabins, or, or the, or the like, then that would be something to be available under that, the way it's written. The applicant requested one parking space per 500 square feet for the main building rather than one parking space for 80 square feet of the main assembly hall. And that is more in line with the general civic uses in the UDO. We also discussed buffers. Currently, there are no buffer requirements for parcels that abut each other in the RN zones or the AR zones. Those are two zones where this would be. Is it RN or RR, excuse me? And the planning commission talked about needing a buffer between this type of use and a residential use. Staff recommended a Type B buffer, and the buffers options are on the screen. You have Type A, which is semi-opaque, and Type B is a little stronger in opacity, and Type C is, is completely opaque, where you are blocked out completely. We, as we talked about in December, we did look at other jurisdictions and what they do. They have different setbacks, they have park, different parking requirements, and they have some other items, such as required a certain amount of the space be dedicated to recreation. Some of them require an operations plan before you get a permit. These are all options that you could also look at or to compare what the recommendations were, or to add in from your own, from your own list. And that was the end of the presentation on this. The applicant is here. If you'd like to talk to him, I think it would be appropriate to ask him about the changes, and I can answer any other questions you have. Thank you and leave.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Looks like he's done a lot of work on this since his last application and has really narrowed this down much better than it was before.
Mr. Thomas, do you have anything to add? State your name and address for the record, please.
Adam Thomas, 2878 Kendallwood Drive, Lancaster, South Carolina 29720. First, thank you. Obviously, the room's a lot more crowded than it was, and thankfully, they're not all here for me, so, and our project. But again, thank you for considering their request and considering this moving forward. After receiving feedback from this group, the staff, Ms. Harden, others, our family spent the better part of the past year in prayer and meeting with counties that surround Lancaster, entities, individuals, nonprofits, our general contractor, Chad Catledge, with Perception Builders. And out of all these discussions, we have located a land use that we, that's not currently included in the UDO, which is why we're here. It seems that this would be a win-win for the county and for landowners, and more specifically for the community. One, this proposed land use does not add strain to our school systems, it has minimal infrastructure requirements, and it allows us to keep the ambiance and the beauty of the farmland in RR and AR pretty much intact. And so that's what we're doing, is we're proposing in the AR and RR districts, a retreat center. We, the retreat center was based on, ours specifically would be a spiritual retreat for youth and families to come and counter Christ and counter creation. And that's our desire, but we understand there could be other landowners and other properties where there needs to be a different type of retreat. Maybe it's a restoration retreat, maybe it's rehabilitation, it could be physical therapy retreat. There's plenty of equestrian centers for, for children or individuals, individuals with neurological issues and disorders, and so we're trying to create and work through something that you can implement down the road, and we believe that is in place. The only couple things there that I believe really stood out was, again, one on the buffers. Again, in RR, there is currently no buffer in the UDO. Specifically, at our property, we would be cutting out 20 acres within over 350 acres, right in the center of it. So our entire property of this retreat center is the forest. And so to take that and then to plant stuff in the middle of a pasture where a property line may be of my own property, that just sounds like it's taken away, again, from the ambiance of rolling hills and pastures that we have. Then regarding the parking space, again, the idea there is that if we lay it out under other civic uses, not all retreat centers I would expect would have an assembly hall. Not all retreat centers may have an event venue, but under other civic uses, that seems to fit. It also keeps us from having a strip mall parking lot in the middle of some beautiful property that is out in the country. And again, I'm here to answer any questions or address anything that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Ms. Richards?
So I'm assuming from your comment, you're carving out this, but for the retreat center, they're gonna have access to the rest of the acreage around it? Or will it be confined to just...
It would be confined and fenced in.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
We now consider ourselves in public hearing. No one is assigned to speak, so we consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you case, text amendment 2024-2368, retreat center use. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Any discussions running? All right. Roll call, please. Maybe.
Because this is the first time that we have the, the new chair and the vice chair, may I make a clarification on your vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Or ask for a clarification on your vote? With the request to approve, there are two, two schools of thought on where the parking should go. The staff recommended one, the applicant recommended another, and we did add in all of the definitions we need to. If you have a motion, I would really appreciate if you would say, as amended, and then make a recommendation on the buffer, if there is a buffer, and what type, and what the parking requirement would be. Thank you.
We'll correct that. Commissioners, can we get a motion?
Yes.
That goes to the?
Yes.
Applicants, or, go ahead.
And procedurally, you would either amend the motion or, or drop the motion into a new one?
We need to withdraw the motion, right?
It is. I withdraw my motion.
Can I second?
Yeah.
And then we need to raise a hand on that, right? No, because that's a withdrawal. Okay, I get that one. Okay, so...
I'll make a motion to, to go forward as amended by the recommendations of the staff.
And a buffer.
And the buffer, yes.
Which type of buffer? They recommended Type B buffer.
Type B, well, whatever the staff recommended, that's, I don't know, I can't remember which what, which staff, which, which one.
The staff recommendation is one per 80 square feet for parking, Type B buffer, the definitions that we included.
Def, what she said.
As Ms. Harden stated.
She did really good.
Motion is for, as read, as staff recommended.
Exactly.
Okay, a second to that.
Second.
Okay, so we'll restate the motion as to approve with the recommendations from staff.
Yes.
Okay, now we do a roll call.
Lynette Henson? Tinklinburg?
For.
Frances, oh, Frances Lou's not here. Sheila Henson?
Approve.
Shelley Richards?
Approve.
And Jason Cavalier?
Motion passes five to zero with one recused. Thank you, Ms. Harden. Thank you, Commissioner Lou. Welcome back. Next item is rezoning request, is it 2024-0859 for Black Hall on Waxahaw Highway? Mr. Matthew?
All right, starting, let's hear it. Everyone hear me? Okay, good. Starting off with a little bit of background about this proposal. It's located at 6872 Waxahaw Highway, a little less than a 39-acre parcel. Applicant owner is Justin Black Hall. The intent, post rezoning process is to open a flex-use business park to offer services and goods to the surrounding area, currently zoned rural neighborhood, and the applicant is proposing the general business zoning district. Two location photos of the site. The one on the left is an aerial view on this. It also shows the flood plain on the site, so you can see that a large portion of this parcel is located within the flood plain. And on the right is an on-the-ground view on Waxahaw Highway, located, looking at the nearby Catholic church. A bit of history for this parcel and the applicant, they did submit a, a sketch plan in 2023, just kind of giving a general overview of what they're proposing, with their axis being closer to the intersection of Highway 75 and Highway 521. That was the first step. The second step is obviously the rezoning, which we're here tonight for, and then they would go forward. If this is passed by county council, then they would go forward to the civil plan process. So it's currently zoned rural neighborhood, and the closest general business zoned parcel, what's the applicant would like to change zoning to, is located 420 feet to the south on Waxahaw Highway, which is that hash white and red on the map on the right-hand side of the screen. Now looking at the small... Now, looking at the small area plan, this is dictated by, well, the future land use is dictated by the Southern Panhandle Small Area Plan. This was adopted in 2021. The recommended future land use category for this parcel is employment, which is also shown on the map on the right-hand side of the screen. So, this proposal would fit with the small area plan. Looking at utilities and infrastructure, the closest traffic count station nearby to the site is X, located directly on Waxahaw Highway, adjacent to the site, and shown how traffic decreased in 2022, but was increasing again in 2023. And that water is available on the parcel, but sewer is located nearby, but not quite on the parcel. So, at this time, staff is recommending approval of this rezoning request from rural neighborhood to general business. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also here, if you have any for him.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. Is the applicant here?
Yes, he is.
I'm sorry, I have a question for staff. Matthew, have there been any letters or phone calls?
I believe staff received one inquiry, inquiry, sorry, I can't talk, but it was just general figuring out what was going on, why is there a sign on Waxahaw Highway?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, please state your name and an address for the record.
My name is Justin Blackhall. My address is 2012 Connaughtonade Drive, Waxahaw, North Carolina. First, want to thank the board and the commission for their time. I do have a lot to say about this, this application, but given the number of people here and the fact that they're here for other things, I'll reserve that time and go to questions. And I think that's, our time is better spent answering your questions, if any.
Well, we appreciate that. Now, any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Not disregarding you, but we have two months' worth of paperwork to go through, so.
I could fill the air, if you want me to, with chatter. I hope you can see that this, this application fits the macro goals of the county and the micro goals. Macro goals, meaning if you look at the project, it pulls traffic away from 521. We're seeking to develop that area to avoid the influx of folks from Waxahaw and from the other large developments, flooding onto 521, heading up to the northern panhandle, which is something that I personally experience. And so, we're looking to use resources and keep folks where they're at instead of adding more traffic to 521. So, this will actively either reduce traffic on 521 or not increase it. And from a micro level, the property is zoned rural neighborhood. It is completely clear. There are no mature trees. It's got high-tension power lines running through the middle of it, railroad tracks to the north, and a big transformer station. So, there's really no rural character. It's really used, it's got some dilapidated buildings. It's really used for people to kind of throw trash as they drive by on 75. So, I think it's, it's in the spirit, from a micro level and a macro level, to the goals of the county.
Thank you, Mr. Blackhall. Commissioner Lou?
Going back to the slide before, where it said what the, one more, please. The small area plan states that employment-oriented, oriented, excuse me, industrial, medical, et cetera. So, if this is approved, these are the only type of businesses that would be put in that area?
I think the, the application is for general business, and so, we'll certainly comply with general business. The idea or the thought behind the application was for a small business park that, that complied with what you've just said, yes.
Staff, is there anything that could be put in there that aligns with general business but does not align with the small area plan?
No.
Okay.
Anyone? Thank you, Mr. Blackhall.
Thank you.
We now consider ourselves in public hearing. No one is assigned to speak, so we consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you case rezoning 2024-0859 for Waxahaw Highway. Rezoning from rural neighborhood to general business. Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please? Sorry, I did a, any motion?
Yeah, a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for rezoning.
I second it.
And then, and then the roll call, please.
Lynette Henson?
Approve.
Judy Anna Tinklinburg?
Approve.
Sheila Henson?
Approve.
Francis Lou?
Approve.
Shelley Richards?
Approve.
And Jason Cavalier?
Approve. Motion passes. Next is the big one. Crestwind. Case number Comprehensive Plan 2024-1735 for Crestwind to amend the Comprehensive Plan from rural to growth area for approximately 168 acres. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as you know, items C, D, E, F, and G are all related to the same project. So, for the ease of everyone here tonight, what we plan to do is make an overall presentation with the initial item, and then refer back to that presentation for each additional item. If you have any questions at all during that, you can let me know, and I'll be happy to clarify that if it does get a little discombobulated. We will have separate items for each and separate votes for each, but we will do a big overview in the beginning. Okay, so, the first item is the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Amendment. This is an application by Culture Group Acquisitions LLC to amend the Comprehensive Plan, which is our future land use map designation for several parcels. They want to change it from rural to a growth area. This is for approximately 868 acres, and it is the following parcels listed below. This property is located between Charlotte Highway and Van Wyck Road. As we mentioned, there are several items, so we will be discussing the Comprehensive Plan amendments. Then, we will go into the development agreements. Then, we will talk about the rezoning of four parcels from LDR to MDR, and seven parcels from RN to MDR. Then, we will discuss the rezoning of 3.2 acres from RN to INS. And then, we will discuss the rezoning of 13.42 acres from RN to GB. And because I've thrown out a bunch of those, I will be going over all of those definitions in just a second. This is an overview map of the subject properties outlined in the nice, pretty teal color. Because this is a comprehensive amendment, a future land use map amendment, I would like to point out, the area that's in the red box is where the property is identified. In the, in our old future land use map, prior to the adoption of the 2040 Plan, which was adopted in April of '24, it was grossly identified as growth area. That was because the entirety of Indian land was identified as a growth area. During the Comprehensive Plan update and rewrite that we adopted in April of 2024, which was a, a little over a three-year process with lots of public input, lots of research, lots of information, they designated several areas as different in the Indian land area and reduced some of that growth. So, with the new Comprehensive Plan, that's less than a year from adoption, this area is designated as rural with the new plan. And this is all the fun stuff that I just said on the map in words, so we will not read this again, but if you have any questions, just let me know. This is the zoning. Prior to the UDO update in 2016, this property was primarily zoned as R30. The letter designations designate some of the things. The, the D on end of it allows for mobile homes and manufactured homes, whereas some of the others restrict that ability. But it's all a residential, rural residential neighborhood. The current zoning that you see in the middle is what it's all zoned now. So, it's a, a nice mix of rural neighborhood, low-density residential, and all of the parcels that are subject to this project. This is where the definitions come in. I did this primarily for our audience to know the, the letters and numbers that we frequently go over. So, growth areas are growth areas intended to designate areas where growth should occur based on the availability of supportive infrastructure and land. These areas are intended to support suburban-scale residential development, along with supportive commercial development at major crossroads and along arterial streets and thoroughfares. Supportive infrastructure required to provide development include adequate roadways, water and sewer availability, school capacity, emergency services, and similar services. For a rural neighborhood, the rural neighborhood is established to protect the residential character of communities and neighborhoods in the rural area at a density of one dwelling unit per acre. The district is intended to promote living, protect farmland, and to maintain the low-density residential. The low-density residential is our, the low-density residential district is established to maintain previously developed or approved single-family residential subdivisions and their related recreational, religious, and educational facilitated at a density of 1.5 dwellings units per acre. Intended to act as a transitional zoning district between rural living and urban development, these regulations are further intended to discourage any use which would be detrimental to the predominantly residential nature of the areas included within the district. Medium-density residential, which is our MDR, the medium-density residential district is established to maintain previously developed or approved single-family residential subdivisions and their related recreational, religious, and educational facilities at a density of 2.5 dwelling units per acre. Intended to act as a transitional zoning district between rural and urban development, these regulations are further intended to discourage any use which would be detrimental to the predominantly residential nature of the areas included within the district. General Business District, the General Business District is generally located on thoroughfares and provides opportunities for the provisions of offices, services, and retail goods in proximity to generally auto-dependent community neighborhoods. The regulations for this district are intended to accommodate the predominantly auto-oriented pattern of existing development while encouraging the transition to pedestrian-friendly mixed-use areas that avoid strip commercial development. We're almost there, I promise. The Institutional District is intended to allow for the continued and future use expansion and new development of academic and religious campuses, governmental and health facilities, and public and private utility infrastructure. The goal is to promote the many varied uses associated with such institutions while maintaining the overall design integrity of the campus setting and minimizing any adverse impacts on the neighborhood, neighboring residential uses. In the attempt to meet this goal, numerous requirements are included, such as but not limited to buffers, landscaping, outdoor lighting, parking, signage, building height, setbacks, open space, and the like. So, those for everyone is a lot of the things. For the simplicity, we will run over those letters. So, and this is what they were intended to use. This property, going back to the overall property, is with our Small Area Plan, which was also identified in that. This is on the northern border of the Small Area Plan, and also is in, the tip of it is in the Small Area Plan Extension. Excuse me. There's also a large portion of this property that lies in the floodplain. Part of the property is also subject to the highway corridor overlay districts and the Carolina Hill Splitter overlay. In the Small Area Plan, this property is identified as contingent upon infrastructure. In some ways, the project does not meet the vision of the Small Area Plan. In other ways, arguments could be made for compliance. Because of the potential for sewer availability, it meets the contingency for development. However, the Small Area Plan states in several of the objectives that rezoning should be based largely on the future land use map, and this property is designated as rural on the future land use map. The Culture Group had a neighborhood meeting on January 14th that was also as beautifully attended as our meeting tonight, and they had several comments and concerns during that meeting. One of the concerns about the Boulevard, that they have going through the Connector Road Boulevard, that will go through the property, and that the developer stated would be donated to the county for maintenance, although the county hasn't taken on road since 2008. There were also questions about the upgrades to Loney Road, and concerns about traffic, and the timing of the infrastructure improvements. At this time, planning staff recommends denial of the Comprehensive Plan amendments. Our biggest concern of this is the relatively newness of our Comprehensive Plan that was just adopted in April of last year. That plan took, as I mentioned earlier, over three years to develop with the research and the voice of the community, and it's just very new and hasn't even been fully integrated into all of the systems yet. And we have concerns that if we start changing it this quickly, it may dilute the validity of the entire plan. So, that is our overview, and the applicants are here for their presentation as well, and then we'll jump into the other parts.
The applicant, Ms. Powell?
We've all signed up. We're going to make a group presentation on the slides. Do we have a clicker up here?
Well, before you get started, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Emily Powell. My address is 2740 Red Maple Lane, Harrisburg, North Carolina. I'm with Colter Homes. And with me tonight is Matt Mandel and Amy Massey. I'll let them give you their information.
Matt Mandel with ESP Associates, 3475 Lakemont Boulevard, Fort Mill, South Carolina.
And Amy Massey with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc., located in Fort Mill, South Carolina.
Matt, would y'all check the clicker, make sure it's working?
All right. First of all, thank you for everyone being here. I know we will be as brief as possible. There are a lot of, a lot of folks here this evening that we have heard from in the past. We do want to share a little on who we are, what we're proposing, and why we're proposing this. So, we are a private regional company. We're located in the Carolinas through Florida. You can see locations. We have two Crestwind communities here in the Charlotte region. That is what we're proposing on this property assemblage, is a Crestwind community. It is age-restricted. We do also have some age-targeted communities. Those would be smaller communities with, with fewer homes, so we do have that in our capabilities as well. Our goal is, is a Crestwind community with a facilitated lifestyle and, and what we're proposing here this evening. So, our Crestwind portion, the rezoning that is associated with the residential, we are proposing age-restricted, single-family detached homes with a mix of lot sizes. You'll see those as we progress through a variety of home plans, forever mentality of that home buyer, private streets. We typically do, understand you guys have done that since, I believe, 2008, when that was changed. So, that's standard here in the county, but we do prefer private streets. Just a little, some of the conversation on age-restricted. We do follow HUD and Fair Housing Administration requirements on age-restricted, requiring at least 80% of owners to be 55 and older. And that is something that we have to track and share data with federal housing and HUD routinely. So, that is, those are the requirements we will list for age-restricted. We also will have HOA documents that restrict no children in the home. Those are also in the development agreement as far as conditions as well. And we do have a, a couple parameters for leasing. We require someone to live in the home for a minimum of a year and a half. We have a cap on leases, and those leases have to be vetted by the board and confirm, again, no children living in the home, establishing residency. So, our, our homeowners, they do some work, some do not. They have a high level of household wealth and disposable income. They are traveling on roads, but they have the opportunity to travel over a variety of times during the day versus all traveling in the peak hours. They're able to volunteer at a higher rate than someone who is a different stage of life with different demands on their time, and they are funding from a tax basis with less services for that sector on items such as schools. less services for that sector on items such as schools, community parks, and recreation. They will be recreating inside the community. We're building those within the community, and they primarily go to concerts and events inside the community. Just a general distribution of wealth on buyer sector, and our baby boomers, our, our homebuyers, they do represent a large sector of wealth in the United States. And those over 50 typically spend the same GDP as, as some large countries, as shown here. They spend over $3 trillion annually in their local economy. From the 853 homes that we are requesting in the Crestwind community, that would equate to over $22 million spent on local goods and services, additional $4-plus million in taxes to the county once that is built out. And then we will get a little more on traffic, but just a high level. While we are age-restricted, I mentioned that trips are spread over a larger portion of the day versus traditional homes being focused in the peak hours, 7 to 9, and 4 to 6 in the evening. So for comparison's sake, an 853-home age-restricted community in the morning rush hour is comparable to 293 traditional homes, and in the afternoon, that comparison is equivalent to 251. Both of those numbers are, are less than what would be developed by right. So, from a, from a number of homes, the impact in those peak hours with the age-restricted buyer is a lower number of trips during those timeframes. Again, we do have the ability to produce more local volunteers for the community with the age buyer that is buying and living in our community. They are able to volunteer at a higher rate and do so. This would produce over 400 local volunteers moving into this community. There is a reduced water and sewer need based on our homeowners versus traditional homeowner. Our homes average 1.7 people. In the, in the county, I believe the number is 2.5 or 3 is the range based on the censusbureau.gov. So there is a lower number of people in the homes. They're not using the same, from a water and sewer perspective, as a traditional homebuyer would. From a public safety and ambulance trips, a couple, a couple items to note. This is broken down by brackets, and a 55 to 74-year age bracket produces similar trips from an 18 to 44-year from head of household, and our average homeowner is 68 years old. We do encourage, and people move to our communities for a very active lifestyle. So they are moving for those amenities, they are moving to be active in their community. These are some of, some photos of events that we do in the community, various, various awards that are associated with the Crestwind-branded community. We do have a facilitated lifestyle director at the community who plans events for the residents. There are always events in the clubhouse, in the fitness facilities outside on the green lawn, whether it's court facilities or, or meetup. Here's some more visuals of that. Lifestyle is a huge proponent of why someone is moving into our community and, and why they want to live here. This is an example of one of our two Crestwind communities in the Charlotte region. This is in Union County. This is our entrance. This community opened, I believe, 2022, and this is a, you can see the gatehouse in the, in the distance, and the monument up front, and the larger landscape in out front as well. This is an overview, same community, clubhouse, court facilities, pool, cabana, green lawn. This is a focal point of the community. We would do the same thing here with a proposed Crestwind, have all of those amenities local inside the community, and everyone tends to recreate in their community versus going to existing concerts, parks, et cetera, that are already in the county. A couple visuals of the homes that we build. There will be three different lot sizes as proposed, and this is the smaller home on the 50-foot wide, 55-foot wide lot. I'm sorry, you can see a couple different variations here. They're all two-car garage, and then as we increase, you've got two or three-car options, and then again, two or three-car options on the larger home product. In summary, we've got residents who are driving at a variety of times versus only peak times. They are funding from a taxes into the system, but not putting any children in the school system versus a buy right that would supply roughly 150 to 200 kids in the school system. And they're recreating internally, they're spending locally, they're volunteering, and one of the other benefits of this, this property assemblage is we're able to provide road connectivity from 521 to Van Wyck, which is on some future plans, and having the large community enables us to, to do that. That is an, an expense that we would then be constructing and building that Boulevard, and you'll see that here in a few minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Again, my name is Matt Mandel with ESP Associates. Appreciate your time this evening. As staff mentioned, we do have several applications, so we're kind of going through each of those items. We do have a Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, the three rezoning applications, and then the development agreement. So I'm gonna talk a little bit more about each of those. General overview, I think everybody's pretty familiar with the site location, but frontage on 521 and Van Wyck Road. Several master plan communities in proximity to this, several which are age-restricted, similar to what is being proposed with Crestwind. Existing zoning, so here you can see the site outlined in red. A good portion of the site is zoned rural neighborhood, and a portion is zoned LDR. Do want to point out that those densities under those districts by right today, the LDR permits 1.5 units an acre, and the rural neighborhood permits 1 unit an acre, and our site plan, I'll get to that in a minute, is currently showing at about 1 unit per acre. So, pretty consistent with those existing zoning densities. Comprehensive land use plan, I know staff talked about it in their report, and that this document is new, and it's a living document. We feel that, you know, there's some statements in here that we're addressing and consistent with, and one thing I wanted to highlight is, the future land use map's intended to provide a general direction of land uses permitted throughout the county. As growth continues and circumstances change, it's imperative that the county continue to review and update this document. So it's, it's intended to be a guide, and I feel like we hit some of those points with our application. So here you can see some highlights from 2040 Comprehensive Plan. A portion of the site is recommended for rural, and a portion of the site, which isn't reflected in our application, is actually already in that growth area, about 484 acres. So, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan Amendment for the rural area is only for about 384 acres of the site. But again, around the site, you can see the master plan community designation, you can see the economic development, and you can see these growth areas, which, in order for those to follow suit with the Comprehensive Plan, a community like this will help encourage those components of the master plan and Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Just highlighting the different areas here, you can see that orange-shaded area, about 392, or 400, excuse me, 484 acres is already in that growth area. So, the amendment for the future land use plan is for that 384 acres of the rural area to the growth. Site is also in the Southern Panhandle Small Area Plan, so you can see an overview here. You can see that orange-shaded area to the north designates the portion of the site that's within that Small Area Plan. Looking at it in a little bit more detail, again, you can see that medium-density residence will called out in the Small Area Plan, which our zoning, proposed zoning is consistent Again, just looking at the proposed zoning, we have the MDR, CSOD, institutional, and the general business. Other goals in the Small Area Plan call out the two-lane collector from 521 to Van Wyck Road, which you can see in the purple here on the map. If you go to our site plan, you can see we're fulfilling one of those goals by providing that collector and connection from 521 to Van Wyck Road. Getting into our site plan in a little bit, again, you can see the connectivity that's being provided. Three different lot sizes being proposed. You can see the different color designations for the 55, the 65, and 75-foot lots. Highly amenitized, you can see the amenity area called out in purple there. Lot of improved open spaces, activity lawns, and greens throughout the community, focused on preserving some of those natural areas of the site as the CSO designates for streams and wetlands, deep topography. Again, just another graphic looking at some of the open space. The lots have been shaded gray here, but you can see we have over 400 acres of open space shown between the natural open space, trees, areas that would be preserved with tree save, and buffers for streams and wetlands. Just looking at some of the various stream and wetland features on the site that have been designed around with this layout. As staff mentioned, we did have a community meeting, and we had some feedback, and so we wanted to share some exhibits just to kind of address some of those concerns that we received. We had some questions about distances to surrounding properties, how far is your development gonna be from ours, what types of, you know, buffer or open space areas are provided. So you can see here, we've highlighted those. We've got, you know, varying distances depending on location and site features. We've got areas that are as narrow as 50 feet, but then some are over 200 feet to the adjoining One of the other items that came up at our community meeting was access from Laney Road. As, as submitted, the site plan shows several lots that are actually fronting on Laney Road with access directly from Laney Road. So taking some of that feedback into consideration, we've conceptually looked at some alternatives on how we may address that, by providing a reverse frontage buffer along Laney Road and flipping access to those lots interior. Again, this is conceptual graphic, but just wanted to show that we're, you know, putting some thought into some of that feedback we've received from our community meeting. The other portion of the application is the institutional and general business rezoning. So this graphic here is just showing locations of those. You have the general business area along 521, and the institutional area is highlighted in orange there. That would be set off of that main collector through the site.
A high level on the impact fees. I will share that the impact fees are per Lancaster County regulation. As we've noted them, the funds are in the development agreement that we have listed, the solid waste fund and the library fund. There is a, a fee to Lancaster County Water and Sewer District. There is no school fee that we have shown. We have verified that we will have no children in the school system, and in our development agreement, I'll share on, on that, we're, we're amending or proposing to amend the development agreement to match the verbiage in the county documents regarding the, the school fee, that we would do our own study verifying that, and then submit that to the county for verification. Here is that slide I was referring to on the development agreement. So a couple things, we, we have the development agreement submitted. I understand we're, we're not going to discuss in high level, or in detail today, that's more for council, but just a few things that had come about either in this, I believe in the staff report, or, or various items. But one is we would modify the amendment, the development agreement term to 10 years to match the, the noted preference. For the school district payment, we would modify language matching Lancaster County's school impact fee ordinance, which states that we would request relief from the ordinance by doing our individual assessment, submitting it for verification, and go that route. The other items are associated with the, the traffic study and phasing. We'll get into that from a certificate of occupancy phasing we need to be finalized. And then, the last item was for a roundabout versus simply a straight-through intersection. So we are proposing, as we progress, to make some development agreement modifications. We've not had the opportunity to, to do so yet, so we are aware that there are some items that need to be revised in that development agreement.
Thank you, Emily. Again, Amy Massey with Kimley Horn, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of South Carolina. And Kimley Horn actually prepared the Traffic Impact Analysis, or TIA, in short, and that TIA that we performed was coordinated with both Lancaster County and South Carolina Department of Transportation staff throughout the process and following national, state, and county standards. That TIA has been reviewed and approved by both Lancaster County staff as well as South Carolina DOT, and we have certain improvements that have been put forth for, required, I should say, for the Crestwind development to perform. So again, these improvements that I'll go through real briefly are for the developer to perform. It's their responsibility. Okay. So we have three proposed access points. One is what we're calling Access Number Two, and it would be proposed to be the first access point to be constructed. So for this particular access point, obviously, the access would need to be constructed itself with a stop sign in place, and stop bar and such, and then the most important thing here is that a, what we're calling southbound or southwestbound left turn lane on Van Wyck at the access point to move the left turners out of the through-traffic flow. So that's this one here. And then next, we have what we're calling Access Number One, and that one is directly on US 521 across from Henry Harris. The improvements here are listed there, but essentially it's constructing a northbound left turn lane on 521, turning into the proposed Access Number One, and it's also reconstructing the existing southbound left turn lane that's already there, and both of those turn lanes would be offset for safety, meaning they'll be, they'll be essentially constructed in the median so that there's better site distance for the turns that are being made. And then ultimately, there is an anticipation for a traffic signal to be placed here, which would be a huge improvement, frankly, on the Henry Harris side of things in terms of the way it's operating now. That would need to be approved by SEDOT based upon a specific study to analyze whether warrants are met, and those warrants would be national standards to be performed once the traffic is actually on the road, not projections, but actual traffic. But in the meantime, there'd be a stop sign there until that traffic signal is improved and installed by the development. And then lastly, we have the proposed extension of Laney Road into the development that was just discussed by Emily and Matt here, and that is, is really the last of the three access points called Access Number Three. And then this, this exhibit is just a summary of what I just told you in terms of the, a little bit more of a stick figure, but showing the various improvements in red, and you can see the basic idea of the Boulevard Connector or Collector Road that's connecting from Van Wyck over to 521.
All right. And again, just a high level, I know we've been hitting a bunch of different things. Here's a, a visual of the site. Here is our proposed timing. We have been working on this for the better part of, of two years. We did submit a sketch plan for 950 homes under a different land use category, proposed land use category, in late '23. We did adjust that to the MDR with a cluster which requires the development agreement. We are proposing the 853 with some other uses, both the institutional- We are proposing the 853 with some other uses, both the institutional and the general business as they make sense adjacent to 521. We have gone to our community meeting and are here tonight, so we are excited to be here. I know there's a lot of people who want to speak, so we will move on, but happy to answer questions when we get to that time or now, whichever that is.
Commissioners, any questions? Ms. Tinklinberg.
Thank you for your time. I guess my question, I know that you mentioned that you're donating 3.2 acres, but you're not building out the service, just the acreage you're offering the county?
So in the development agreement, we have stated the development agreement as land only, but we have not had a chance to really engage as to specifically what that use is, if that's fire, EMS, police, governmental use. We are looking for feedback as to what that best use is. We can pad that site and do utilities to that, but again, we have not had the opportunity to kind of further those conversations. But we are intending that to be a positive for the community.
Ms. Richards.
I know that technically you have the average of the one unit, a little over one unit per acre, but it's because so much of that property is in wetlands and floodplains. I mean, I've been driving by that piece of property for, I moved here in '95, so what is that, 30 years? As I know, every time we have a rain event, that whole area. So even though you technically have the one acre, it's because everything's shoved down to one side because so much of it is undevelopable. You say it's going to become an open space, but if it constantly floods, how is it going to be usable open space?
So a couple of points to that, the site is, and we had to calculate it for the development agreement, so I was checking that earlier, it's two-thirds upland, one-third wet. Buffer, floodplain, et cetera, obviously, you can see it, everybody's driven by 521 and has seen that. So yes, there is floodplain, and yes, there are buffers. Two-thirds is upland, so that's the area we're looking at from a development area perspective. There are 100-plus acres that are open space perimeters, et cetera, aside from that buffering floodplain. So there are over 400 acres in common open space total, and again, only one-third is wet. So there is additional, we have additional green space between the rear of all lots, which is hard to see at this scale, but we have, in addition to the rear setbacks, we have green space between lots. So each lot would not back up to another lot. All of our lots would be maintained by the HOA. That's part of the lifestyle that you're buying into. And another note on the floodplain, yes, the property on the east side does have more floodplain. It's generally east side next to 521, and that kind of southern border, you can see in the site plan that that's where we have on the eastern side some commercial use and institutional, but majority of that area is floodplain, and that's why you simply see that road connector for the better part of a mile through there with limited other developable use.
Thank you. Sorry, I lost my voice. You're welcome.
Ms. Lou.
You mentioned that Boulevard is going to be the connector road, which you said would serve what the county would like to see developed in future, connector road between 521 and Van Wyk?
So the connector road is on the, I believe, both the comp plan and the RFATS plan. So that's something that we understood is intended to be developed there, that road. So with our development, we are asking for the request for rezoning. We would also be the developer and we would be the home builder, but yes, we would then be building that collector road that's shown on future plans.
And what do you propose the speed limit would be on that road inside of a development like that?
I don't know speed limit. You may have a better.
I would say that would be determined at a future time. I would think that probably somewhere on the 35 mile per hour would be a guess, but that would be based on design criteria and a lot of other factors.
I just noticed that in most 55 and up communities, there are, excuse me, there are a lot of use of golf carts, and usually the speed limits are 20 miles per hour, topping out at 25. And I just wondered if you felt that was a suitable connector road? Do you think people would want to turn off of a 55, 45 mile an hour road and cut through a neighborhood? I'm just wondering if you think it's a suitable fulfillment of a connector road?
I'll let Amy think and speak on traffic, but one of the other things that is denoted on this site plan that, again, may not be extremely visual, is we do not have any lots fronting onto this. So it's not where you'll have driveways accessing off of the boulevard. The boulevard is intended to provide road and traffic connectivity, and we specifically designed the site plan to ensure there was no driveway access. And then, as Matt mentioned earlier, understood comments and concerns from Laney Road, so we've done the same thing for Laney and will continue to evaluate how to make Laney smoother, smoother transition.
And you propose donating this road?
So the collector road, we would develop and construct. We are proposing to donate that, the same process that Roslyn is developing and donating their collector road.
Donating means you're no longer responsible for it after it's built?
Yes, ma'am.
A minute ago, there was a slide up that was reflective, I believe, of the floodplain that's in that area to the southeast. That might have been him, yeah. I'm asking you to back up because I didn't get a good look at what the buffers were called out for it. I see 30s, 40s. It looks like there's a couple of places close to the central location where the largest, I think it's a wetland area is what it looks like. I don't see any buffers called out specifically for that.
And not every buffer is labeled just for the sake of visual, but there should be buffers on all. We're requiring the 30-foot or 50-foot or 40-foot based on what type it is. So there are buffers on all of them. I'm not sure which specific area you're talking, but we, again, we did not label all of them just for visual sake.
I understand. I see the line. I just wanted to get a better look at it there. Thank you for going to that. Any other questions, commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming up.
Thank you.
Well, now I consider ourselves in public hearing. When your name is called, please come to the dais, state your name and address. When you do, you'll have three minutes to speak. Our first is going to be David Kitchen. Is David Kitchen here? Name and address, sir.
David Kitchen, 208 Charleston Court, Indian Land, South Carolina, 29707. Been there all of my life, 66 years. I was born and raised in Indian Land. My family has been on this area for over 125 years, and probably in Lancaster, the Richardson name, folks might remember, the Richardson name, BJ Richardson comes to mind, one of my uncles, great uncles. They've been here probably since the early 1850s. My grandfather, great-grandfather, he helped to build the Osceola United Methodist Church. Some of you might know where that is on 75, the Little White Church on the hill, sometime around the 1900s, again, if I'm not mistaken. I say this as our land is one of the properties involved in this proposed development. We, as a family, did not know what to do when my grandparents passed away. They knew that probably one of us grandchildren, aunts and uncles, a family member would take it over to farm. It's just not profitable, not big enough to be profitable. So as a family, the Richardson family decided, let's try to do something good for the community with the property, which we feel would be to allow Crestwinds to go through with it. We think our grandparents would like that. It would be good for the community, in our opinion, of course, so we want to try to go ahead and go through with it. That's really about all I got. I'm not a public speaker, so I did have to type a little something on the phone. There's been so many changes in Indian Land since I helped build 521 from a two lane to a four lane, so I may be responsible for some of this mess that's going on. Gave me a good job and learned a good trade while I was working with them, so that's okay with me, too. We could have moved out. We saw the changes coming many years ago. 20 years ago, we saw that things were just going to be turned sideways, but here we are. We're not going anywhere regardless if this goes through or not. We're not going anywhere. We're not looking for a big paycheck to move out and buy the, you know, the beach house, mountain house or whatnot. We're staying right here, no matter what. We've got all the restaurants and all the places. We want to go within five minutes now as opposed to 25 or 30 years ago, there was absolutely nothing. You had to go to Pineville, Lancaster, Rock Hill, Fort Mill for groceries, much less anything to eat. And my grandparents ran a couple of the country stores that were around here. Steel Hill, AMZion across the street was AP Niven's store. They ran that for several years, and before then, Pedastore in Indian Land, some of you might know that store, and the gin, cotton gin and all that. So they've had a big presence in the community. We're not leaving. And as you can tell, I do support what Crestwind wants to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Your name and address, ma'am.
Marie Laney Broom, 6850 Laney Road, Lancaster, South Carolina, 29720. I've lived here my entire life, grew up in the area of Laney Road. My grandfather owned much of the property that was there. We own two properties on Laney Road, and it butts up to this development, and it will disrupt our life as we have known it, as we grew up knowing. Our friendship house, as we call it, allows for fellowship and foundational growth for many of our people in the community where we are able to share, whether it's just enjoying the countryside, or whether it is having a meal together or whatever it might be. We don't want to lose that, and we believe that we will. And while there are so many things that we have heard from Crestwinds, we would like to, our family would like to ask you to vote against this. We have very little left in our community here in Indian Land that allows us to remember the things of the past. We know that change is coming. We know that change has been here for a long time. The traffic continues to grow. It's going to continue to grow with this and everything else. Emergency services, we have a background in emergency services, both EMS and the coroner's office. We know what this will bring. I understand the road. I also understand the significance of whatever speed limit you put on that, people cutting through there, that will not be whatever is followed. And unless you have witnessed what happens as a result of that, then it's hard to appreciate what happens sometimes with those dangers. All the other uses of our resources, we hate to see that change with so little left in our community to join that. So we ask that you vote against this Crestwind development at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Logan Hedges. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
You did. Good evening. Logan Hedges, 9658 Van Wyk Road, that little corner up there that's, I'm trying to keep green. Unlike our wonderful developers here tonight, I actually reside in Lancaster County. I face the consequences of overdevelopment as others have. As landholder adjacent to this proposed rezoning, I have concerns with traffic, noise, disruption of rural living, all these things, but I will not address that today. I'm a nursing administrator. I've worked in three of the four local healthcare systems. I've been administrative leadership in two. I'm ER nurse by trade. I've performed CPR more times than I can recall. I've waited through blood, COVID, the whole nine yards, came out the other side. But let me be clear, I'm not representing any particular healthcare organization tonight. I'm here as a private citizen. We do not have the sufficient medical resources for our existing community. For those who are insured, wait times and office visits are protracted. For emergency treatment, wait times are often long. Those needing hospital admission often wait over 24 hours post-diagnosis in the ER for a hospital bed. Emergency departments, whether 10 or 50 beds operate frequently at 10% to 20% of normal capacity because the admission holds waiting in the ER for a room. This results in prolonged waiting room stays, sometimes in excess of 24 hours. I personally witnessed this many times. These conditions place our community at risk. Planned healthcare expansion for this area already is estimated to be insufficient for our current population. Outside the hospital, EMS crews are equally strained. In some areas, the strain prevents discharged patients with mobility issues from being taken home, further slowing admissions. Traffic increases EMS travel time to hospitals. This is vital time. Whether you're a trauma patient, or you've had a heart attack or a stroke, how long it takes you to get to the hospital is vital, and the extra burden that this will add, of course, is going to prolong that. A long-term care and assisted living facilities also have long wait times for admissions, and we haven't even hit another pandemic yet. There are over 7,000 approved homes for Lancaster County that have not been completed. Do we really need another 800-plus rezoning? A 55-plus community like proposed presents the highest toll on our healthcare services. I should note, I'm 55 and I'm climbing, so this is a concern, but our resources simply cannot support this development. I implore this council to hit the brakes literally on this proposed change to zoning, follow our existing plan. The higher tax revenues do not equal a better community, and I hope that we focus to improve the health of our existing community first. Since I do have another 20 seconds, just to be clear, Ms. Richards, you're right, it's not one house per acre. There's 400-plus acres that's not being used, so when you talk about 55-foot front zones or 75, the acreage is still about a quarter of an acre. These homes are very densely populated. If we could fill the wetlands, they would. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike Mosley. I hope I got that one right, too.
Yeah, I am Mike Mosley. I reside at 9612 Van Wyk, Lancaster. I, too, respectfully oppose the request by culture group to develop this property for various reasons. I'm sure you're familiar with the traffic in that area, not only Van Wyk Road, but 521 is just atrocious at times. One thing that, you know, we do understand in that part of the county is 55 and plus residents and the impact on not only the infrastructure, but also EMS. I live across from the 55 and plus community there at Sunlake, and there's rarely a day that I don't hear EMS responding to some sort of emergent call. So again, I know they're spread paper thin, and I share those concerns. I'm not here to repeat all that, but primarily, my concern is something that I know you're also very familiar with, and that's the cost of making this right. In order to improve, you know, the infrastructure and to improve the utilities, the EMS that we need, or again, the hospital impact that was just previously spoke of, it takes a lot of dollars that is going to fall on the shoulders of existing residents. The community today is primarily of retirees, most of which are on fixed incomes, not opposed to progress. Not opposed to progress, but I am opposed to, again, add an additional burden to the people that live in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Colin Wilson, 735 Baker Place Road, Lancaster. We previously lived up in Indianland for 19 years. We bought one of the parcels as part of this proposed development 20, 21 years ago. At that time, you could lay down and take a nap.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Sure. At that time, you could lay down and take a nap on 521 when we bought it. You know, the only constant we've had since then is change. You know, we've been overrun, and since COVID, we're getting more and more people moving here from other states, and yes, I was one of them. But my family was here in Van Wack, I think with the revolution, but we were on the wrong side. So they moved to Canada. Well, my father at least got smart and after World War II moved back to the States, but just not far enough south. Whoever settles in winter. But anyways, in this 20 years, we've been approached and had people wanting to purchase this land for all sorts of things. I wanted to just build one simple house, but my wife overruled me, and we bought further up in Indianland. We've had all sorts of strip mall proposals. We've had storage unit proposals, all sorts of what I wouldn't put in my neighborhood and I wouldn't put it in someone else's neighborhood. We have had other developers, but they've folded their cards and gone away because they just didn't, you know, they couldn't get their acts together. This is the best plan I've seen in years, and I'm impressed with it. And I know they've worked hard with the planning department, both before and after, most of them left and then got replaced. And I know they've made a lot of changes to try to fit this. And I hope that you do consider it, and I hope that it is a positive, as positive as I think it's going to be. Thank you much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Pat Benz, 48416 Snapdragon Lane, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29707. Good evening, Chairman and Vice Chairman and members of the Planning Board. I'm here to represent concerns about the Culture Group applications for the proposed Crestwood 55-plus community. Per the Lancaster County 2040 Comprehensive Plan, the population growth in Lancaster County increased by 57% from 2000 to 2020. The population growth in the Panhandle alone increased by 476%. This type of growth is not sustainable, as it creates service impacts throughout all districts in Lancaster County. Delays in first responder services, including EMS, fire, sheriff, and coroner. Near gridlock conditions on roads during high commute times in the morning and evening, and the schools are all at capacity. You will be receiving more in-depth information about the impacts of the proposed Crestwinds 55 and over development on the Panhandle and all districts throughout Lancaster County from other presenters. The information was obtained from the following: the Lancaster County website, Lancaster County Department responses to Freedom of Information Act requests, content and presentations from the Lancaster County Civics 101 program, presentations by county council members and first responder staff at different community events, and newsletters from county council members, presentations and discussions at Lancaster Council meetings, content and presentations at the Lancaster County Council Retreat on 24/25, the Rock Hill and Fort Mill area transportation study, which includes the Lancaster County Panhandle and the South Carolina Department of Transportation website. I'm therefore asking the Planning Commission to recommend denial of all the Culture Group applications regarding the Crestwinds 55 and over community, Comprehensive Plan Amendment CP 2024-1735 Development Agreement, and the proposed zone changes RZ 2024 through 1732, 1733, and 1734. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Bruce Cohen, 7199 Chrysanthemum Road. Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. I want to congratulate the new chair, vice chair. I'm sure the novelty will wear off soon, but enjoy it while you got it. I am presenting information about the impacts of development on area roads obtained from Lancaster County Development Website and the DOT Website, Department of Transportation. In the Panhandle, 3,800 residential units still to be built that are approved, and that's a suburb of Charlotte. Lancaster County, south of 55, development, 1,860 units still to be built and approved, and that's a suburb of Charlotte. They're all going north. City of Lancaster, 2,200 units are still to be built and approved, and that will become a suburb of Charlotte. They will go north. And all of these are on or near 521. Also, major commercial developments. We've got Costco coming in. The figure, if I'm not mistaken, was 2,200 cars into the parking lot, 2,200 cars out of the parking lot. I believe that was the figure. That's 4,400 more cars. But we don't just have Costco. We have Lowe's Food, which is about the same size. We have the Target Center, and we're building a hotel. I mean, the place is saturated. It's oversaturated. This morning, it took me approximately 15 minutes to get from Shelley Mullis, which I waited for three red lights in the traffic, to Dolby's Bridge. Dolby's Bridge. That's less than 20 miles an hour. Was 521 designed for 15 miles an hour? I don't think so. So, and these are actual figures. This comes up with 10,600 more residential units already approved, not built, that doesn't include the 850. By their figures, it's 1.7 cars per, add the 850, we're almost at 20,000 more cars. 20,000 more cars. And when they leave, especially since we have Costco, when they pull out, they're hanging a left. And that's it. They're going north, and I ask that you do not approve this, for it will be a parking lot, and it's going to be a nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Name and address, sir.
Hi, Joe Kohler, 167 Sweetbrier Drive, Indianland, South Carolina, 29707. I'm going to add a little bit to what Bruce and others have said. I'm going to speak specifically regarding our Sheriff's Department. Right now, we have about 147 sworn officers, which is about 43 less than the national average. Our population growth in Lancaster County was approximately 96,000 in 2020. It's estimated in '24 to be just over 108,000. In 2020, there was just over 65,000 active calls for the Sheriff's Department. In 2024, there was just under 80,000. So our population went up about 13%, but our call volume went up close to 20%. That's just scaling with, as everybody else has mentioned, we have thousands more homes to be developed. We have Costco, Lowe's, Target, other businesses coming in. That's creating a bigger burden on our Sheriff's Department, which is already stretched thin. The majority of the development, as stated by others, is on 521, and if we end up with that parking lot, times it takes for our sworn officers to hit those targets that they have now to meet the engagement are only going to increase. There's nowhere for them to go. What Bruce was just talking about with Shelley Mullins, when it is a parking lot like that, sirens going, there's nowhere to go. They can't get to where they need to be. That only decreases their effectiveness. We are lucky to have Sheriff Fale and the sworn officers. We are lucky here in Lancaster County that they've always been understaffed and have performed well, but we are really pushing that envelope. It's only going to get worse. Sheriff Fale's hoping to get another four officers for the Panhandle area. He needs 10. I was lucky enough to be in the Citizens Academy and worked with the Sheriff's Department to understand what it is that they do. We're really lucky here. We have great response times in the state compared to even national averages, but some of the best in the state. We're running them ragged. They do not have the staff, and we're making it worse because we have all this development going forward. I hope you consider to deny this application. We can't afford anything new. We need to build what has already been approved and then refocus on our infrastructure, because we're not today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kohler. Ken Beck.
Good evening. Congratulations on your positions. Like you said, I hope you get to enjoy them. You should. Thank you for what you're doing. I'm going to talk about the Fire Department. And I have, as a person, I've got over a dozen years in emergency medicine. First as a volunteer EMT in New York, then a paid EMT. I was also a hospital corpsman in the U.S. Coast Guard for eight years. So I know about emergency medicine and response times, and I know how critical it can be to be there quickly. And I find it hard to believe, currently in Lancaster County, the Fire Department, we have 18 fire stations. 15 fire stations are fully staffed by volunteers. When fire rescue calls come in, volunteers must first drive to their assigned station and then respond from there. Takes more time. There is one fire station in Kershaw, two in the Panhandle, with full-time, part-time, and volunteer staff. Fire rescue call volumes continue to increase, as has already been mentioned. There are not enough county resources to keep up with the demand. In 2024, the estimated population of the Panhandle was about 43,000 people. The guideline is one fire station for every 10,000 people, so there should be four stations in the Panhandle. There are currently two. In 2024, there were 2,700-plus calls for service, including 750 medical assistance calls. Fire rescue personnel cannot give the same medical attention as paramedics, so they may respond first, but it's not going to be the same level, plus they can't transport to hospitals. All Lancaster County Fire Districts are affected when the number of calls exceeds the number of fire units, and then you have to get into mutual aid situations, where you're pulling from other areas to help with your backlog, and now their backlog potentially if they get more calls. The Panhandle has the most built-out 55-plus communities, with a total of 4,755 units. Where we're going now, the Culture's group proposal for 55 and development is 853 homes, and we put further strain on our limited fire department, as well as police, emergency services. Therefore, I would like to recommend to the council that you reject this until we get a lot more in our favor, catching up with the Sheriff's Department, building fire stations we need, and getting the roads built. We were recently at a meeting with someone from DOT, and we asked about what are the plans for 521? And the person from DOT said, for 521, DOT has no plans. So they were talking about what we just passed or didn't pass, the bond issue and the tax increase. And some of us are wondering why we're asking for all this money with no plan versus first, let's get a plan to look at this and develop a plan. If that study says this can be done, then you go back and ask for the money. So I know the council, not this council, county council, is thinking, how do we restructure the bonds? There's a lot of issues there, especially with DOT telling us there is no plan for 521. Thank you for your time. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Mary McCammon. Oh, sorry. Pardon?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, he didn't? Okay, I thought he did.
13012 Teal Court in Sun City.
Thank you, sir. Good catch, Ms. Horden.
My name is Mary McCammon, and I live at 2112 Hartwell in Sun City. I've lived in Indianland since 2017, and I'm speaking with a little bit more specific data regarding the EMS situation that we have, and particularly in the Panhandle. You heard from the active EMS gentleman who was up here giving you his firsthand knowledge. Well, listen to some of the data we got from the Lancaster County EMS Department. First of all, their volume of increase in calls from 2023 to 2024, one year, was 500 more calls. It takes them seven to 12 minutes, and 46% of those calls go to the hospital. There's only two EMS stations in the Panhandle. There's a total of six in the rest of the county. There's only three ambulances that are assigned 24/7 to the Panhandle, and one ambulance that has 12 hours on. The rest of the county has 11 ambulances with only one that has 12 hours on. And the worst of this is that if we wanted to add an ambulance back in 2020, it was $400,000. As of 2024, it's $900,000, another half a million, just to add an ambulance. So we're looking at huge numbers of trying to get our medical emergency up to snuff with the, you've heard about all this population growth and what we're trying to sustain right now. Then the other thing is we're understaffed with paramedics and EMTs. We currently have, let me see, we have three full-time positions that are not filled. We have 17 part-time positions that are not filled. So we're understaffed, way understaffed. Then the cost of the equipment for the ambulances, of course, the inflation, you know, I mean, all of these costs, when you put it all together, are just astronomical to try to just get to a place where we can feel safe as citizens who already live here. Or we can feel like we can get an ambulance if somebody has a heart attack and needs to go to the hospital, and that there's a backup ambulance. So this is a true concern for us. So please, vote no to the Culture Group for right now, please.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Chairman Cavaliere and members of the Planning Commission.
Name and address, sir.
My name is Theodore Matuga, and I am a retired physician. I've lived at, I live at 9263 Whistling Straits Drive in Indianland, and I've been here since I'd like to read something that I have put together here. I'd like to read something that I have put together here. I am presenting information about the impact that the 55 and over developments have on the EMS and the Fire Departments throughout Lancaster County. As just presented, there are numerous existing 55 and over developments in the Panhandle north of Highway 75 and a new 55-plus development being built south on Highway 5, or south of Highway 5. The majority of the residents in these developments are in their 60s, 70s, 80s, and 90s. There are a greater number of EMS calls for service from these older populations than the general populations due to existing medical conditions, including medical emergency incidents like heart attacks, strokes, and falls. All Lancaster County EMS and Fire Districts are affected when the number of emergency medical calls exceeds the number of EMS and Fire Units available in the Panhandle. EMS and Fire Units from neighboring districts have to be dispatched to the Panhandle, leaving other nearby populations vulnerable and without services, thus creating a domino effect throughout the entire county. Firefighters are also limited as to the type of emergency medical services that they can perform and also cannot transport patients. Delayed response times and transport to hospitals negatively impact all patients, whether they live or die, the length of time it takes and how well patients recover, and the likelihood of permanent disabilities. Lancaster County EMS and Fire Departments are already struggling to meet the current demand with the first responder resources that we have now available. It will be even more challenging to provide emergency medical services with the addition of thousands of additional residential units already approved and being built in the Panhandle and throughout other districts within Lancaster County. The proposed Cresswin 55-plus development consisting of 853 more homes would further cripple the timely delivery of emergency medical services throughout the county. Therefore, I am asking the Planning Commission to deny all the Coulter Group applications for the proposed Cresswin 55-plus development. Comprehensive Plan Amendment CP 2024-1735, the Development Agreement, and all proposed zone changes, RZ 2024-1732, 33, and 34. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Matuga. I'm sorry I misspoke your name. Kathy Storm?
Can you hear me? Kathy Storm, 5025 Redwood Grove Trail, Lancaster. You just heard everybody talking about the people who live in over 55s, and many of us, you saw limping up here, I'm one of them. I'm here to talk to you about the end result that we don't want to occur, and that's the coroner's office. Keep in mind that the coroner is on duty 24/7, 365 days a year. A large member of the, I'm sorry, a large number of the coroner investigations are ongoing, and some take up to a year to close. There is a high level of coordination with the Sheriff's Department. The coroner investigation staff is also, also testifies at criminal court proceedings. The coroner investigation training takes an average of two to three years. The national certification takes an average of three to four years. There are six full-time investigative staff, five of which have already obtained the national certification. Less than 3% of the coroner offices throughout the state of South Carolina have attained this level of professional certification. There are seven part-time transport staff. Recruitment is ongoing, but difficult to get people to do that kind of work. There is no clerical staff. Investigators also have to perform these duties seven days a week. The coroner department caseload continues to increase every year due to the population growth of Lancaster County, especially in the Panhandle, where the largest number of 55-plus communities currently are. In 2023, there were 761 coroner cases, 160 administration and notification cases. In 2024, there were 772 coroner cases, 197 administration and notification cases. Thousands more residential units have been approved and have not been built yet. A new 33, a new 55-plus development of 1,860 homes is now being built in Lancaster County south of Highway 5. The city of Lancaster is also annexing land and approving new developments. I really recommend that the Coulter Group be refused. Thank you.
I would like to ask everyone that we have heard you around the emergency services issue with the county. If you have any more to add to that, keep it short, please. The other items around the development that you may have concerns need to be heard, and we are going to run real long one time. We have only been through one page of the signups. We do want to hear your concerns, but let's move through it as quickly as possible. So next on our list is Barbara Scanell. And I apologize too if I messed up your name.
Barbara Scanell, I live at 8016 Carolina Lakesway, and that's in Indianland, South Carolina. I'm probably going to summarize basically what all these other speakers did, which is to say, we need to look at the impact on all the county districts. This is not just a Panhandle issue. As everybody has stated, when their services required in the Panhandle exceed what is available, they pull units from the other districts. And like we've said before, it's a domino effect. So we're asking you to look at the overall impact of new development on the entire county because we're all going to be affected. So they talked about, we have roads that can't, are right now over capacity. All the first responders are over capacity. The county council is facing challenges to fund infrastructure and first responder services throughout the entire county, including expansion of road capacities, improvements to storm drainage, staffing of existing first responder departments, building and staffing new EMS stations and fire stations, and purchase of vehicles for EMS, fire, sheriff, and coroner. This has caused delays, as they talked about. I personally have experienced it. I've been on 521 both directions, and these were not necessarily at peak times. And it took me three or four times to get through two intersections, and there's fire stick, fire, fighter, fighting vehicles behind me, or EMS, or even sheriff, and they are stuck. Even in non-peak times, sometimes they can't get through, and it's taken them three or four times because we can't get over, there's no place for us to go. So it affects that. Schools right now, they sit at capacity, and people say, well, who cares about that? Well, we pay for those schools. And because they're over capacity, because the developers are not required to kick in toward them, that's going to be falling back on all of us. And medical appointments right now, good luck. What used to take maybe a couple weeks to get an appointment now is taking months. So all of these things together is not just, again, in the Panhandle. This is going to be happening throughout all the districts. So I'm therefore asking the Planning Commission to recommend denial of the Coulter Group, Comprehensive Plan Amendment CP 2024-1735, the Development Agreement, and all three proposed zone changes, RZ 2024-1732, 1733, and 1734. We are not noobs. We are not, not in my backyards. We're saying we don't have the resources now to deal with what we've got, much less the 10,000 more units already approved and on top of that adding more. This county cannot sustain this kind of development, and we're all at risk, all throughout the county. So please consider this. It's really important for all of us. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Ma'am.
I was going to say something, never mind. Everybody that's here that's awesome.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. Anybody need to take a break real quick or anything? Okay. We take a, get a motion for a recess here? Show of hands. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Well, you heard me. I was trying so hard not to. Look at me learning some new shit. I love it. We need to cut down on, I mean, how many people spoke now? Shouldn't we have a limit on that? Can't have a limit on that? Yeah, a whole bunch of people. What if they just talk all night? But didn't they say they had to collab and like, you know? Because even you said like, let's cut down on the EMS.
So I can ask the planning?
Say, if I be, I know you.
Happy I got my coffee. We're going to be here a while. I mean, I'll get you a cup. I'm sorry. And we're only on the one item. Really on your first item. How are you? Nice to you. Um, I don't, I haven't seen the list. I know they're repeating a lot. Hopefully that announcement helps. Thankfully. Oh, hell no. Pardon my French. I don't have a capacity for that. It's all I can do to get here for these meetings, but less the extra stuff that comes with that. No, thank you. Romeo, number three.
Somebody have a Starbucks, like Uber, Uber Eats, like some Starbucks order.
Is there a Starbucks? I don't know. There's a dog in here. Here's that one right here, but it may be closed at like 4:00. I'm trying to stop there one time.
There we come. Kind of, it's like herding cats. That's what we say about our kids.
All right, Lord help us.
Motion to continue.
Second.
We're just motioning to come back.
Yeah. No problem. No, you'll be all right. We'll get it this time. I turned mine off on. Okay, thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. We all needed a break from that, I think. But we've heard your comments around EMS, fire, coroners, police. We've got you. We understand. We've heard. If you have any other items you would like to cover, please keep that in mind. No more comments around emergency services. We've got you. So we'll call up our next one to return to public hearing. Jean McCoy. I hope I got that right.
My name is Jean McCoy. I live at 9213 Whistling Straits Drive in Sun City. And I just wish to add my voice to this commission's records, requesting that you deny the application for Cresswin. You know, you've already heard all the reasons that I also agree with. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sean Corcoran. Name and address for the record, sir.
Evening, distinguished commissioners. Sean Corcoran, 8231 Hickory Manor Lane in Van Wyk, South Carolina. I'd be remiss if I hadn't mentioned that. All right. I'm here tonight as a concerned resident, taxpayer, voter. Also serve on the town council for Van Wyk as our mayor. And I've had several of our residents in the area approach me to provide their comments about the proposed Cresswin.
Happy I got my coffee. We're gonna be here a while. I mean, I'll get you a cup. I'm sorry. And we're only on the one item. Really on your first item. How are you? Nice to you. Um, I don't... I haven't seen the list. I know they're repeating a lot. Hopefully that announcement helps and helps. Am I the one who's trying to change something? Thankfully. Oh, hell no. Pardon my French. I don't have a copy for that. It's all I can do to get here for these meetings, but plus the extra stuff that comes with that. No, thank you. Romeo, number three.
Somebody have a Starbucks like Uber. Uber is like the Starbucks order.
Is there a Starbucks there? I don't know. There's a dog in there. Here's that one right here, but it may be closed at like four. I'm trying to stop there one time.
There we come. Kinda, it's like herding cats. That's what we say about our kids.
All right, Lord help us.
Motion to continue.
We're just motioning to come back.
Yeah. No problem. No, you're gonna be all right. We'll get it this time. I turned mine off on... Okay, thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. We all needed a break from that, I think, but we've heard your comments around EMS, fire, coroners, police. We've got you. We understand. We've heard. If you have any other items you would like to cover, please keep that in mind. No more comments around emergency services. We've got you. So we'll call up our next one to return to public hearing. Jean McCoy. I hope I got that right.
My name is Jean McCoy. I live at 9213 Whistling Straits Drive in Sun City. And I just wish to add my voice to this commission's records, requesting that you deny the application for Crestwood. You know, you've already heard all the reasons that I also agree with. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sean Corcoran. Name and address for the record, sir.
Evening, distinguished commissioners. Sean Corcoran, 8231 Hickory Manor Lane in Van Wyck, South Carolina. I'd be remiss if I hadn't mentioned that. All right. I'm here tonight as a concerned resident, taxpayer, voter. Also serve on the town council for Van Wyck as our mayor. And I've had several of our residents in the area approach me to provide their comments about the proposed Crestwood development. I'm gonna bounce through a few of them and release some things out because they've already been discussed, so... But I will point out that this development will fall immediately outside the town limits of Van Wyck and stands to impose significant burdens on town and county resources and the residents. First, you need to keep in mind this is not an adequate basis for amending the comprehensive plan. You should ask yourselves, why are we considering an amendment to the plan at this time? The county's comp plan was recently passed in April of last year, less than 10 months ago. Nothing has transpired in this part of the county in that time to justify an amendment to the plan. Our county planning staff, county residents, spent significant time and resources to complete the final plan and district map. County residents in this area remain in agreement with the current plan, map, and zoning designations. This part of the county is not appropriate for nor able to accept additional residential growth. If this area was able to handle more growth, the comp plan would have been designated the area as growth, and this question would not be before you tonight. I also flag to you the new state park plan for Van Wyck Road, which is incongruous with any plan for neighboring high-density development. The comprehensive plan in its current form is simply not ripe for amendment at this time. I can point out that there is no funding in place to meet the current demands on our roads and emergency services. How do we intend to meet the increased investment demands that this new community will present? In light of the recent failure of the road and school bond referendums, I fail to see how passage of the amendment would be anything other than irresponsible. And thanks to... We need to stop allowing the tail to wag the dog. Adequate funding for infrastructure and services must be in place before any development must proceed, may proceed. I propose a solution. This part of the county can sustain further limited growth, if and only if we adequately plan and stick to those plans. In the last two years, Van Wyck adopted a comprehensive plan, UDO, that restricts subdivisions to a conservation model, which preserves open space and limits the burdens that come with large, high-density subdivisions. I suggest you take a look at our model before deliberating on the Crestwood matter. What is being proposed tonight is not only an irresponsible approach to growth in the Panhandle, but is incongruous with what is being done in Van Wyck. I urge you, on behalf of my fellow county residents, to not recommend the proposal to county council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Maggie Norris.
I'm Maggie Norris, 1243 Moreland Wood Drive in Lancaster. My point is the concern about the loss of forest, farmland, and open space in northern Lancaster County. I too am a resident of Van Wyck and am very proud of the comprehensive plan that we have in Van Wyck to preserve this open space. And I would encourage you all to vote against the Coulter plan to amend your comprehensive plan. It's incongruous with Van Wyck and also Lancaster County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. Doug Frick. Name and address for the record, sir.
Name is Doug Frick. Address is 4635 Rockwood Drive, Waxaw. Is that all I was asked for?
That's good, sir.
My wife and I live on Highway 75 or right off of it between Waxaw and 521. The road needs paving so bad, and then there's that intersection at 521 with 75, and you get a green light approaching 521, and you turn... It gives you an arrow to turn left, and then you have to merge into the traffic coming south on 521. Dangerous. Then in the afternoons, especially, come down 521 to make a left on 275 to go towards Waxaw. There's room for about three cars. And if you've got 10 cars wanting to turn left there, you've got a problem. Right above that, going toward Charlotte, is Walnut Creek subdivision. You can get about seven or eight cars in that turn lane into Walnut Creek. And I guess what I'm saying is... I traveled towards Charlotte on 521 less than a mile. My wife and I have some property there between Charles Pettus and 521. There are two turn lanes between Walnut Creek and our... Actually, between Walnut Creek and Van Wyck Road. A car can get into one of those, but not a vehicle with a trailer behind it. I guess what I'm hitting at is infrastructure is now. But these people... And my wife and I have property, investment property, and we would like to develop it one day. And these folks with the 800 homes have a heck of a lot less density than Sun City and the apartments that are being built. I think to come is...
Time.
Thank you. To come is... Has gotta be treated as well as what's come behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frick. Greg Gregory. Name and address for the record, sir.
Greg Gregory, 805 Blenheim Court, Lancaster, South Carolina. Mr. President, members of Planning Commission, appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight from a different tack than most of the prior speakers. I'm president of Builder Supply Company here in Lancaster, which is located a few blocks down the road from here. It was founded in 1908, and we're a supplier of building material to home builders in the Lancaster County and Charlotte region. We have about 125 employees and about 75 pieces of rolling stock. I know Coulter to be an excellent builder and developer with a very strong reputation in this market for building high-caliber active adult communities. Crestwood communities, which I'm familiar with, are a great and attractive brand. I'm a recovering politician. I was served as a state senator for the county for about 26 years, and during that time, I helped bring sewer to Indianland along with the Lancaster County Water and Sewer District. And there was always a question about, you know, whether we should bring sewer to Indianland because of the result, growth that would result. But there was always gonna be growth in Indianland. It's just a question of the quality or lack thereof of the growth. And this development would be another high-quality development, similar to Sun City and Treetops, communities that many of the speakers tonight already reside in. There's a lot of, I guess, talk about the need to fund growth, but where does the funding for growth come from? It comes primarily from the construction of single-family homes in the county. These are massive revenue generators. If there's $150,000 in material in a single-family home, that's gonna generate about $3,000 for the county and about $6,000 for the state, just in sales tax, not to mention all the other fees. So about half the counties in South Carolina are growing, and about half of them are shrinking. And I think that the latter would trade places with the former in just about any case and welcome this growth. This is the best type of growth that we could have because active adults don't place any stress, communities don't place any stress. On the school district, it's a high-density community, which reduces sprawl. I mean, this land is gonna be developed eventually regardless. If it's not developed in this manner, it's gonna be developed with, you know, bigger lots, which is just gonna push more development down 521 because all this land is gonna be developed over time. About 40% of it is set aside to not be developed, which is certainly a plus. And lastly, I'd just like to refute a lot of what's been said about growth being out of control in Lancaster. In fact, building in Lancaster is declining and has declined considerably. From 2000 to 2022, there were an average of about 1,300 houses built per year, and now that's down to 700. So down about 42%. But that's my comments, and I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Take a minute here and remind everybody, there's some rules for the room. If you would please remove your hats while we're here. You know, you veterans back there, we do appreciate your service and thank you for abiding the room rule, sir. Mavis Geruder. Again, I apologize if I did not say that correctly.
You got it right. My name is Mavis Geruder, and I live at 4005 Channel Islands Way in Lancaster. I've never spoken at a town meeting before, but I felt that I needed to make my voice heard on this proposed development by Coulter Company. I'm against the proposed community for many reasons. Most of the reasons are probably what other residents have already said: increased in traffic, need for EMS services, and overdevelopment in Indianland with a need of more and better infrastructure. I just wanna say that because this is an over-55 community and won't increase the school enrollment, is no reason to approve this development. It certainly will have negative impact in our community in numerous other ways. The need for additional revenue to build and improve our schools and improve our roads is a pressing concern for Indianland. However, I don't feel the additional revenue from this community would be enough to warrant this approval. Tonight, I heard a figure of an income of $4 million, but yet a new ambulance is like $900,000. So I mean, these figures are just mind-boggling. Last election, the bonds for the school and road improvements were defeated. I believe that one of the reasons they may have been defeated could have been due to the high number of senior communities. Many of the seniors are on fixed incomes, and they feel that they don't want a tax increase for which a bond would mean. And I've heard people comment that they don't have kids in school, and they don't want their taxes to increase. They don't pay a school tax, but they do pay the money that would be allocated on a bond. So for many... So many may have voted against the bonds, and another senior committee would continue to perhaps negatively impact future possible bond votes. I have three children and grandchildren in the Indianland school system, and I've heard firsthand of the overcrowding in the classrooms, the shortage of teachers, and virtual classes. I think we need to do better for our children. I'm running short on time, so I will just basically wrap up by saying, overall, I don't see the benefit to approving this new community and would like to go on record as opposing the development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Sam Beagle. Name and address for the record, sir.
My name's Sam Beagle. I live at 5140 Mill Race Lane in Lancaster, South Carolina. Just touch on something the previous speaker mentioned about the bond referendums that failed. Me personally, I voted no against both of those for the specific reason that I feel that the county has failed its residents and didn't properly plan for all the growth that they previously approved. It became evident to me that the builders and developers walked away with millions and millions of dollars and left the taxpayers of the county with the responsibility to fix the mess that was created. I'm not placing blame on anybody. I've not involved in county politics at all, so I don't know who approved it or who denied it. To me, the finances just don't add up. The previous speaker mentioned that, you know, this is a great revenue source to pay for some of the services. One of two things, something doesn't add up. Either the county is abjectly mismanaging funds because of the huge amount of growth that we've seen. If you take that example, we should have over the supply of money, right? If we've had all of this growth, and it's great because this will more than adequately fund the services, then we should have a ton of extra money. Well, clearly, we don't because, as noted in the newsletter that was sent out by Stuart Graham, which I appreciate very much, you know, just several things he mentions that land on Harrisburg Road has approved fire station, but county must find the funding source for this. An EMS station at Treetops is approved, and land is secured, but they don't have funding source. Fire trucks need to be replaced and are three to four years out. Again, you know, needs to be, you know, fixed. Full-time firefighters, they need that. So if the growth pays for all of that, then why isn't it already done? Clearly, that doesn't happen. To end, I would just like to say that many of the things that frustrate me of all the uncontrolled growth, we don't have funding for them. Why have that been allowed? Who's approving that? The builders are walking away with millions of dollars, and the developers are walking away with millions of dollars. We didn't make them pay for the increases in the services. So we, the taxpayers, get to pay for that. My suggestion is that not one more development should be approved until these problems are solved by the county council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beagle. Joe Laurens. Is Joe Laurens here? All right, we'll try that one again in a minute. Sally Ann Giallo? Please correct me if I'm wrong.
It was pretty close. It's Sally Ann Giallo.
Giallo.
I live at 6303 Natural Path Avenue in Indianland. I'm gonna have to... I'm here... I'm not sure if I approve or disapprove of the development. I'm here talking about a completely different issue concerning developer accountability. I live in a Coulter-developed property up in Indianland called the Covington... Bill is at Covington. I have been with... Corresponded with the Planning Commission, oh, not the Planning Commission, the Planning Board, Roxburns, over the years and different things that we were going through because the developer had no accountability for things that weren't done, that should have been done and weren't done. In fact, we have now a resident-controlled board, and yet we still have issues with the developer, although they're not there any longer. My position would be to ask the commission and planning people to look into accountability for the developer and looking into if, whether or not they were good neighbors. Did they have problems with development in other Coulter communities? And I can attest that we did. Is there anything that's outstanding in prior communities? I've dealt with Coulter people over the years, from Candace Bain to Doug Patillo to planning people, and the issues still remain to this day. The other thing that Coulter did state that in their presentation was that, yes, it's the baby boomer generation, and it is 55 and over, and a lot of us are, you know, we bought our homes to not move again. We want to live there peacefully, not having to worry that the infrastructure issues are gonna cause us to have these special assessments within 10 years after moving there. We're on limited funds. Some of us are. Some of us are working. There are elderly people there. I'm on the younger end. And we don't want to have an issue, so I would encourage you all to look back to see how the developers treated the communities that they already have in place. And if there are issues, to look into if they will be good neighbors to the county and just take those into consideration when they're making their decision, if this does move forward or if it doesn't move forward. I think, you know, developers should have accountability. There should be impact fees. Whereas people say... Whereas people say, you know, there's 55 and over, and there's no children in school. Well, there are a lot of older adults that are raising grandchildren, so there is the eighty-twenty rule, and there are some children in these communities. So, I would encourage you just to look into the background and see if there's anything that would warrant a yes or no vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Roy Sandsbury, 821 Obanaski Road, Van Wyck, South Carolina. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, planning staff, thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk tonight. I'll be very brief. You've heard a lot of negative reasons tonight. I'm certainly not going to reiterate those. I would like, though, to reiterate what Mayor Kocorian has brought up to y'all about the small area plan. You have listened to a lot of statistics and very valid reasons tonight not to approve the new development, but I'm thinking you already have your reason, or your, I'm sorry, you already have your answer within the small area plan and the comprehensive plan. There was much time and energy and taxpayer dollars put into these studies. The planning department did a phenomenal job of investing hours and months and really years in some of these, in these two plans, and they work. The hours and the time, in my opinion, should not be wasted. The taxpayer dollars should not be wasted. So, I implore you to allow the comprehensive plan to remain as it's drafted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll give Joe Laurens one more try. Perhaps he took off. Okay. Well, that concludes our public hearing section, so we consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you comprehensive plan amendment 2024-1735. Do I have a motion?
Can I make a comment before we go to motion? I would really like to compliment all of the public tonight. You came informed with statistics and with data, and it was obvious that you, some of you coordinated your efforts, so you weren't repeating the same thing over and over again. And we really appreciate it when the public takes their time instead of just coming up and saying, "I don't want this." You came up with good, valid reasons, and I like to have an engaged public. So, thank y'all for the time and effort y'all put through before you came up and spoke tonight.
Motion, please.
Motion to close open discussion? Is that what we're... A motion to close open discussion?
That'll work. A motion for... Do we need a vote?
At this point, it's your discussion. You need to make a motion to approve or deny, and then open it up to discussion, and then you take your vote after that discussion.
A motion to approve or deny.
For ease in voting, I would like to make a motion.
For ease in voting, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
The motion is to approve. Any discussions? Judy Ann Tinklinberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have quite a few thoughts on this development. We spent a lot of time working on our comprehensive plan last year, and part of, or one of the main concepts of that plan was to try to attract good developers that want to invest in our county. And along with that is providing infrastructure to support the impact that they're bringing, so it's not a burden on us. And with that in mind, it is worrisome to me if we were to approve this, because we would be setting a precedent that we're willing to change our comp plan when it's supposed to be our basis of making decisions. So, that is my first concern. Another concern is whether this is 55 or-plus community, I don't feel comfortable setting the precedent that we're willing to waive impact fees regardless of what those are. I want to, again, attract residents and developers that want to invest in our entire community, and that includes every single citizen regardless of their age. And as another person mentioned, it would impact future voting that would change, you know, the direction of our county moving forward. I asked the question earlier about the 3.2 acres that you're providing the county. That is wonderful, but out of the total amount of acreage, it is not much, if I'm being frank. And if you're not willing to also build out what you're offering, it is really not very helpful when you've heard the numbers of what that is. So, for all of those reasons, I cannot support this project in any capacity. I'm looking through my notes to make sure I'm not missing anything, but I think that gives the gist. I appreciate everybody's time for coming out, and I think I do appreciate the good presentation. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Richards.
Thank you. I agree very much with Ms. Trinklberg. I'm a registered professional engineer in multiple states, been a thirty-year resident of Lancaster County. I just, I don't, I don't see the need for another 55-plus community and just a crammed-in area up there. I don't live in, I live in the southern part of the county, but I work in Charlotte, so I drive up there every day. I see the traffic. And I have, unfortunately, I know so many of you talked tonight about EMS. I have, as a, I'm not an EMT, never been an EMT, but I have, unfortunately, six times in my life had to give CPR to someone who didn't survive because EMS could not get there for one reason or another. So, I definitely feel you on that. Like I said, personally, six times, had administered CPR to someone who didn't make it because of traffic and stuff, EMS could not get there in a timely manner. This just wasn't here, this is when I used to live in Texas, has been in multiple places. So, you know, we've got, I wasn't on this commission when, when things were, you know, can't lay blame for previous people, but I do not see the strains that this development is going to put on the county. I don't see the benefit that they're going to give us that out, I don't see that it outweighs it. Thank you.
Anyone? Ms. Lu.
Thank you, sorry. I agree with the first two things that Ms. Tinklinberg said about the comp plan. I think it is a slap in the face to residents to ask them to work, along with staff, and a slap in the face of staff, to ask them to work on a comp plan, and then, less than a year later, have someone come along and ask it to be overturned. If I was a resident who spent time on that, going to the meetings and so forth, I would ask, "What's the point?" And then, second, the impact fees. I also have the same concern, that if you are a good neighbor, you might not have people in your community using the schools, but the products of those schools, the graduates who stay in this community and work, you are going to benefit, the residents are going to benefit from those educated students taking on jobs in the community. And it disturbs me when someone does not want to pay impact fees. And the next three, last three on my list are infrastructure, infrastructure, and infrastructure. We don't have it, and I feel it would be irresponsible to have more development that we can control. We couldn't control anything in the past that wasn't on our shift, and things were different when people did vote for them. But now, we can see what we have and what we don't have, and I'm very concerned about infrastructure.
Anyone else? Okay, commissioners, this is a restatement, is comprehensive plan amendment CP 2024-1735. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Lynette Henson. Judy Anna Tinklinberg.
Deny.
Frances Liu.
Deny.
Sheila Henson.
Deny.
Shelley Richards.
Deny.
Jason Cavalier.
Deny. The motion is unanimously denied. Next item up is development agreement 2024-1732. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Cavalier. Moving on, this is the development agreement portion of the Questwind Agreement. As a body, you do make recommendations to council. This is primarily contingent upon the comprehensive plan amendment, but as county council can only take your recommendations into consideration, we do have to move forward with all of these presentations. Because of the altered, the cluster subdivision overlay that they're requesting, because of the movement of the densities, it requires a development agreement. It is for the same property that we had already talked about. They're asking to apply the cluster subdivision overlay, and they are requesting it to be zoned MDR. The development agreement is mostly negotiated by county council, but it requires the public hearing and a recommendation by the planning commission. Some of the highlights in the requests in the development agreement that have already been alluded to in the previous discussions are, this is going to be a, they are proposing a 55 and over age-restricted neighborhood. They're requesting a waiver of the school impact fees. They have a clause in there that exempts the developer from additional public safety fees, which means increases in the current impact fees or anything related to the institutional donation that they want to give. And it is offering the 3.2 acres to the county for a fire and EMS station, which is, that is what's stated in the development agreement. If county council decides to negotiate, they can change that, as they had made in their presentation. That is not stuck in stone. The other thing is the off-site traffic improvements. They are proposing, as they had mentioned, the turn lanes onto Van Wyck and the north and southbound turn lanes as well. This is a picture of the left two side, the left side, well, the pretty green, is the developer's estimated timeline, which would be year one, they estimate fifteen units going down, so forth. The others, the pretty salmon color, is a running fee of the totals of that as calculated by our development services director. This would be what fees they would have to pay for those and the total. On the far right, you will see that the proposed actions and what year they will be done. So, for instance, the north-south, north-south lanes on 521 would not be due until year seven out of ten of the agreement, and the Laney Road extension would not be due until year nine of ten. The fees on the bottom are related to the total fees that would be received from the impact fees. There are multiple paragraphs in the development agreement. The staff has been finding conflicts with current development agreements, such as the effective date clause. The effective date clause is not consistent with the adopted clause, which is causing some conflicts, and they're requesting that. Basically, what this is, is they want to wait until well into the process to actually close on the properties, and they don't want their time to start counting until they've gotten a lot of their stuff done. It's causing some rubs in other ones, and we're wary of that in there. Of course, as we mentioned on the chart that I just showed you, some of the improvements are on a lengthy construction schedule, whereas they won't have to finish some of those until almost the end of the term. And of note, this would be the first development agreement that we have enacted since we've put into place since they have enacted the impact fees, and we are concerned with the waiver of impact fees after we've started that. At this time, we do not have a distinct recommendation for you, but the following findings of fact are that the subject property consists of 851.5 acres located between Van Wyck Road and Highway 521, that the development agreement consists of items of concern, such as the effective date clause and the removal of the school impact fees, and that the development agreement will be a contractual negotiation between the developer and county council.
Any questions for the staff and the commissioners?
This is rather belated, but I just, I had not heard of the eighty-twenty rule before, and eighty percent of the people...
That's actually a HUD requirement. That's not, so it's, they can, they can limit things, but HUD require, they, it's a very long story, but yes, technically, even if they have restrictions, there's some allows, but...
Okay. I was just curious, I had not heard of that.
Anyone else?
What is the dollar amount on the school impact fees?
We looked that up. It's for a single-family home, it's currently $9,336.
I did the math, it's $7.9 million.
And did I see that number correct? Their, the impact fees, the way they're proposing, it's only like 1.8 million and some change?
Can we go back to that slide?
Yes, I can go back.
Yeah, is that 1.89 million, basically?
The 1.85, the 1,885,983 is the shared impact fees for fire EMS sheriffs and parks. That is not represent, all that money would not go to one of the agencies. The proposed solid waste fee and the proposed library fee are two of the fees that we don't currently require, that the applicant proposed, and that would end up being 426,000 in solid waste fees over ten years, 213,000 in library fees over ten years, and the 1.8 is the, all of the impact fees other than school over ten years.
Thank you, Ms. Harden.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Powell, do you have anything to add?
I can just answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicants? Okay. We now consider ourselves into public hearing. No one has signed up, so we consider ourselves out of public hearing. Where did I lose it? Okay. I need a motion.
Motion to approve the development agreement.
Second. Anyone?
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve the second. Any discussions from the planning commission members?
I was concerned about the lack of school impact fees, but now seeing that almost 400 houses would, over 400 houses would have to be built before they would even do the turn line, turn lanes, was quite an eye-opener.
Okay, thank you. The motion is approval of the development agreement. Can we get a show of hands for approval of the development agreement? Show of hands against the development agreement? Motion is denied unanimously. Now, we're to rezoning requests, 2024-1732.
Yes, sir. This is the first rezoning request of three. This is their request for an LDR and RN parcels to be moved to MDR. As it stands, this is not consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan. This item is contingent upon the comprehensive plan amendment that was denied earlier. However, as I mentioned in the previous item, council has the right to take that as a recommendation only, and we do need to go through this, even though it doesn't quite fit. The outlined parcel that you see in red is the parcels for this proposed rezoning. There is 239.086 acres of this that are currently zoned LDR that they're requesting to go to MDR. As we discussed earlier in the process, that would go to a 2.5 dwelling unit per acre density, and the, from a, from a 1.5 to a 2.5. And then, the 6.12.414 acres from rural neighborhood to MDR would be a density of one dwelling unit per acre down to the two and a half of a density requirement. As you can see from the chart below, the surrounding properties are primarily residential and agricultural. You do have Sun City that backs up to the back of this development, which is a planned development district. Sewer is currently not available on this property. However, the developers have been in discussions with the Lancaster County Water and Sewer District, and they have a plan to provide wastewater services for this property. Water is currently available. The plan to provide sewer would be very expensive, and it involves a good bit of reworking pumps and adding new pump stations in this area. Again, as an age-restricted neighborhood, the developer states there will be no impacted school capacities, but we have newest jurisdiction over the HOA covenants that they would propose to put that limitation in. Again, they had their meeting, there were several concerns mentioned in that meeting that we've already discussed earlier today. that we've already discussed earlier today. And our staff recommendations denial, we recommend denial pursuant to the following, that it, the property is about 850 acres. It does have water, and sewer could be available, but is not yet there. They are proposing a connector road through this, but county hasn't taken roads since 2008, so we have concerns over who would be maintaining that road. And that the future, the existing future land use map of rural is not compatible with this proposal. If council decides to go forward with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, the designation of growth area that they're requesting would be compatible with the rezoning. At this time, staff is not recommending approval of the Comprehensive Plan, and that was previously denied by this body earlier as well.
Questions for staff? Ms. Powell, I don't, oh, I'm sorry.
So, and maybe they have to answer this, the vice president. So, I know that for Roslyn, they, it was a significant effort to get the sewer working and several lift stations and such, because it's just so flat in that area of the county. Is this going to tie into that, or is it going to, is it going to be a separate conveyance to the treatment plant?
I, I don't have that specific information from the district. I do know that they will have to construct their own pump station for this neighborhood, and they will also have to refit an up-haul, one that is in one of the current neighborhoods.
Okay.
Ms. Powell, I'll offer you the chance to speak. I think we're good. We now consider ourselves in public hearing. No one is assigned to speak to this, so we now consider ourselves out of public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to move?
Approve.
Approve.
Yeah, okay. Second?
Second.
Any discussions? Okay. Motion to approve for rezoning requests, 2024-1732. Show of hands for approval of the rezoning request. No hands raised. Show of hands against approval. Motion is denied unanimously. Next topic, rezoning, 2024-1733. Ms. Williams again.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is the rezoning request to rezon the 3.2 acres from rural neighborhood to institutional. Without going into a lot, everything we've already discussed is still the same. The recommendation, that is a parcel that is located a little bit off of 521 in that area up there that they are proposing to donate. We've already talked about that. In the development agreement, it specifies out fire and/or EMS station, but as we mentioned, it could be a contractual negotiation should council choose to change that. We do not have a recommendation at this time. Technically, by all rules and standards, institutional can fit almost anywhere because of the uses that it is with religious governmental health and all of those. However, I feel that this one would be, because it's kind of a package deal, that it would be irrelevant, and we don't want to put, not irrelevant, but it would be a package deal. So I'm not sure that they would wish to go forward with this should the others not pass. So we do not offer a recommendation.
Commissioners, questions for the staff? Ms. Powell, I'll offer you the chance again. Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Ms. Inklund-Berg. The motion to approve rezoning request, 2024-1733. Show of hands for approving the request. There's none. Show of hands against the request. Request is denied unanimously. Rezoning request, 2024-1734. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the final rezoning and the final item on the agenda related to the Crestwinds project tonight. They're requesting approximately 13.42 acres of this property, which is the identified parcel on the screen, from rural neighborhood to general business. This is part of the master plan development agreement that they are presenting to council. As you can see from the chart here, the surrounding areas are primarily residential, agricultural, other than the Sun City subdivision that backs up to the property. The general business, the area that they're requesting to have general business is located in the red blocks there that pretty much mostly fronts 521. They did have their meeting, and they discussed that. It's already been discussed in this meeting. If you have any questions, we can go back to that. And we are recommending denial of this request for the following findings of fact. The property is 13.42 acres. The site does have access to water, and sewer could be brought into available, but is presently not available. And that the existing future land use map of rural is not compatible with the general business in that area. We are also not recommending approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and this would be wholly contingent upon that as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any questions? Ms. Powell? I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Show of hands for rezoning, to approve rezoning request, 2024-1734. Nobody. Show of hands to deny. Rezoning request is unanimously denied. And I believe that concludes our Crestwind portion of this. Do I have a motion for a five-minute recess?
Motion.
Second.
Show of hands? There it is. Five minutes.
Click on the, yeah.
Two of us.
Oh, because we're all sideways.
Thanks for saying.
That's, I honestly didn't know that.
I knew it was nine and change, but when I'm multiplying times eight fifty-three, I thought whatever that changes, and that brought up to 2.9, which rounded up to eight and I thought having the exact number would be impressive. I was gonna say, is it too late to go back to BBA?
I'd even said, you can have, you can have your damn duck.
Like, you know it's bad. I know, I looked over there, and I thought, what?
I didn't even realize it. I even brought him a bottle of water and everything, and he left. He did, he left. I said, he did leave.
I was like, oh.
All the funny thing is, when the first line came, and I put it in a...
Yeah, just gotta, it's, it's doing okay. You don't have to, you have touched it a couple of times. Yeah, just move it out of the way.
I think I grabbed a water. Do you want?
No, I'm good. I got my, I got my...
I was impressed by the people that looked at all of the people, and you got up and went. I was like, I watched it all. What's that? I said, I wanted to say my part, and he said, I watched it.
I took all that stuff, I mean, to work today, and I'm gonna have time to organize and go down the agenda. I know, it was, I was talking about, I was busy, I don't know if I accomplished it. Yeah, I just, I don't feel like, but, yeah, so it's like, I just, you know, I have, I can't, I'm just gonna go to work tomorrow and do it all over again.
Actually, I'll get another coffee.
They have motion.
Second.
Show of hands? Unanimous? All righty, we are at Site Development, 2024-0656, Eagles Landing.
Let's, how about that? There we go. Perfect. Awesome. Okay, so this is Eagles Landing. It's a proposal for, to develop a portion of Phases 5, 6, and all Phase 7 located in the Edgewater community. On the left-hand side of the screen is a map with the subject area outlined in red. Now, looking at the proposed preliminary plat, this is the most recent revised preliminary plat, plan presented to us by True Homes. This revision shows a third access, a, three accesses total compared to the two accesses in the prior plans. This additional access is located on Edgewater Parkway. The site acreage is just under 66 acres, proposing 132 single-family lots, and proposing about 29 acres of open space. Now, looking at some photos from the site, the first is showing the proposed entrance off Edgewater Parkway and another entrance off Crooked Stick Drive. Now, this is a phase map of the entire Edgewater development, and this is just putting you in perspective of where this is amongst all the phases. So that Phase 7 is that orange color, and then that purple is part of Phases 5 and Phase 6, outlined in red. So now, a little bit of an update. As of December 19th, the Tentacle Review Committee, or TRC, sent an approval letter stating that all TRC comments have been addressed since the last revision has been updated. And I do also have an update on the plans for Catawba Ridge Boulevard. Both these, Phase 1 and Phase 0, which I'll get into more in a second, has received their set of comments. Both of these are the phases that True Homes are required to construct. Phase 2, which is the final portion, which connects to 200, is required to be completed from the neighboring contender project. But just to give a brief outline of the Catawba Ridge Boulevard background, the Army Corps of Engineers issued a permit to construct this road from the Edgewater development to SC 200 in 2001, with that permit expiring in 2006, shortly after the economic crisis at the time stalled the development here for many years. In December of 2020, Craft Holdings submitted a amendment request. This included an exhibit showing the proposed Catawba Ridge Boulevard extension. This proposed amendment reflected a comprehensive replanning of the remaining undeveloped acres and the Craft Holdings control, which primarily focused around the bond, non-bond areas. This amendment, including the extension of Catawba Ridge Boulevard, was included in the amendment, but there was a stipulation that a stop-work order be placed on the Bridgewater West Civil Plan, Civil Construction Plan, until Catawba Ridge Boulevard Phases 0 and 1 were completed to the end of True Homes' property line, essentially where they border between True Homes and the neighboring contender property. And we now have received both of those plan sets and have received comments from the county staff. So at this time, staff recommends approval of Eagles Landing. I'm available for questions, and the applicants are also here.
Commissioners, any questions for the staff? Is the applicant here, you said?
Yes.
Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, and there's actually two applicants, True Homes and then also the Forfeited Land Commission, who's represented by Steve Matthews, who's here with us as well. My name is Joel Madden. Address as well for me?
Please.
10614 Glen Eden Court, Mint Hill, North Carolina. Thank you, Matthew. Good summary on that. Appreciate it. As, as mentioned, we were here back in November, and have made some updates to the plans and want to address, address those, the key differences, and heard some feedback during that meeting about, way in the past, before it went, you know, before the downturn, there was a second entrance from this section onto Edgewater Parkway. We've gone back, restudied that area, and have made that connection. So that's, that's now, you can see it on the, on the revised map on the left-hand side. The other thing I'd, again, like to highlight, as connectivity was a hot issue at the last meeting, the, the first road on the far right-hand side of the site plan is a very important one, because it provides a second access for everyone currently living in the cottages, as well as the Phase 11 area that's currently under development, a second access onto Edgewater Parkway. So that's, that's an important one, and that's a piece of work that will come quickly after, you know, if this should be approved. So that's, that's a road that was partially built previously, so there's already storm drainage in the ground, there's already sewer in the ground. There is curb and gutter, that's gonna have to move. One of the comments on the original sketch plan was the road needed to be a little bit wider, so we made that revision, so curb will need to be removed and moved out. But that's something that will provide additional emergency access into the cottages in very short order. We've already submitted... that meeting about, way in the past before it went, you know, before the downturn, there was a second entrance from this section onto Edgewater Parkway. We've gone back, re-studied that area, and have made that connection. So that's, that's now, you can see it on the, on the revised map on, on the left-hand side. The other thing I'd, again, like to highlight, as connectivity was a hot issue at, at the last meeting, the, the first road on the far right-hand side of the site plan is a very important one because it provides a second access for everyone currently living in the cottages, as well as the Phase 11 area that's currently under development, a second access onto Edgewater Parkway. So that's, that's an important one, and that's a piece of work that will come quickly after, you know, if this should be approved. So that's, that's a road that was partially built previously, so there's already storm drainage in the ground, there's already sewer in the ground, there is curb and gutter, that's gonna have to move. One of the comments on the original sketch plan was the road needed to be a little bit wider, so we made that revision, so curb will need to be removed and, and moved out. But that's something that will provide additional emergency access into the cottages in very short order. We've already submitted for an erosion control permit for that road, just to get ahead of things, so we can get that access as, as early as possible. We've made our second submittal to the state for an erosion control permit on that piece. We worked with Lancaster County Water Sewer District on a, on a sketch plan for exactly what might need to be moved or shifted from the old infrastructure that was built years ago, and we have a set of plans ready should we be approved tonight for those, that, that, just that one road in these first 13 lots, again, to provide that very important connection into the cottages. One other point of concern I wanted, that was brought up at the last meeting, that I wanted to address, was the area that's kind of in the middle there, which is a common open space strip. You've got a road and then a common open space strip, then some lots that then front the lower road. Yeah, thank you very much. That, that strip, there's an enormous amount of gray change over there, and this, this is why the, the, the number of lots went down from the, the allowed, which is 178, down to 132. That common open space area will be a planted, permanent common open space area that allows gray transition, will be vegetated, and will provide, and it's at a minimum of 60 and up to 70 feet wide through there. So it's a, it's not a five, 10-foot wide strip, it's a substantial piece of property that will really will provide the buffer to the rear of those homes that front on the other road. So that's, I think, important. As it relates to Catawba Ridge Boulevard, as Matthew mentioned, some, some updates on those plans. So Phase 0 of the plans received conditional approval from the county. The one condition was a slight change to the pavement section, which we've revised those plans to accommodate that pavement section, working with Jeff Cato, Public Works Director, and resubmitted those. We've received our first round of comments from the state for erosion control and have also resubmitted to those. So as soon as those erosion control permits come back, we're ready to work on that first section of road. I already have two contractor bids in hand, ready to go to construction on that first piece, which takes you down to the existing bridge over Bear Creek. The section, second section of the road, as, as staff men, mentioned, has been designed, submitted to the county for review. First set of review comments came back today, so our engineers are working on those revisions. We'll be coordinating with staff to make sure there's clarity on all the comments, and their goal is to resubmit those in about three weeks, or as long as it takes them to kind of get clarity on all the comments and get, get the plans revised. While they've been working on, or waiting on the Phase 1 comments, they've been designing Phase 2. So those Phase 2 plans are nearly ready to submit. The engineer wanted to get comments back on Phase 1, so if there were any county comments that could be incorporated into Phase 2, they could incorporate those. So approximately the same timing, the first submittal of the Phase 2 plans, which does complete the road out to 200. Now, that's under control of Contender, as Matthew mentioned. That work is being done for Contender, but those plans, I had a call this afternoon with Contender and the engineer, and they anticipate submitting those plans in about three weeks as well. So, since we last met, we've had bi-weekly meetings with Jeff Cato, Public Works Director, with the engineer who's designing Phase 1 and Phase 2, just to help facilitate, answer any questions, you know, design things that might come up, et cetera, so just really helping to drive that process forward. Contender representatives have been on that call, I've been on that call, and then the engineer who's designing Phase 1 and Phase 2 have been on that call, so we, we are, are driving that. So, beyond that, I'll, I'll pause there, and if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try to address those.
Okay, real quick, please, sir, would you kindly remove your hat while you're in the room? Blue hat, third row, yes, you, thank you very much, sir. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Ms. Richards?
What is the timeframe on getting the road to actually connect to 200?
The, on, on December 13th, I submitted a letter in support of this application that provides, application, this provides detail that relates to that. For Phase 0, as soon as we get our erosion control permit, we're gonna work on that section. That's approximately the first 1,500 linear feet. The second, about 5,000 feet, so about a mile, is the shared, is, is our responsibility as well. As soon as we get permits on that, which at the time of this, we were anticipating April 11th to have full permit approval on those plans of 2025, April 11th. That has slid about a month, so move that from April 11th to roughly May 11th, we'll start construction of that. And then, we estimated at the time, approximately in August 31st, 31st of 2025, completion of Phase 1, with the, with the slight permitting delay, that slides back to about September 30. So that's the portion that's under our control. Beyond that, I can only tell you what Contender has told me. Their hope is, and they're working with staff on their preliminary plat and things like that, that should they be progressing with that, then their intent is to roll right into Phase 2 of that road. It is being designed so that we can do that. What I would love to see happen, and what I'm encouraging to happen, but don't control, is that that contractor never leaves site. They build Phase 0, we get approvals on Phase 1, they build Phase 1, they get approvals on Phase 2, being out of my control, and that they continue right on through there. If all that happens, the road could be completed as early as 2026.
Anyone else? Ms. Williams?
I would like to clarify something just for your sake. True Homes, by their development agreement, is only obligated for that certain part, and then after that, Contender is obligated. However, they have obtained the same engineer to design the work, so they're hoping to encourage and push the seamless nature of that, because as he said, they're trying to work on it all as one project, even though they're not responsible for that bottom part.
Anyone? We now consider ourselves in public hearing. Anyone who's assigned to speak? Yes, sir. Oh, do you, okay, oh, my apologies, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, sir. You name an address for the record.
Thank you. And I'll be brief. My name is Steve Matthews. I'm with Law Firm of Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd, and we represent the Lancaster County Forfeited Land Commission. I'm sorry. We represent the Lancaster County Forfeited Land Commission, which, as I believe you all know, was the owner for an extended period of time of the land, this, this development. Over the space of about 10 years, the Forfeited Land Commission was trying to find someone who would come in and take over that development and make of it what it was originally intended to be. And fortunately, True Homes came along, and we were able to work out an arrangement there. Our interest is in getting the property sold to True Homes. They're taking it on a lot-by-lot basis over the course of about seven years. In order to get it back on the tax rolls, there had to be a cooperative effort between the county, the Forfeited Land Commission, the bondholders from the original deal that didn't work out, and True Homes in order to set that up. With regard to particular applications like this, it's the sequence that's important to us. Because they only take the property down in chunks, rather than just buying it all at once at the outset, there are certain things that have to happen before they can buy certain pieces. So for example, the, the 13, which, which would be the first platted lots that come about in Phase 6, in order to be able to get there, we have to have a preliminary plat approved, so that we can then figure out exactly what's gonna be located where, and then determine where we're gonna draw the lot lines, and we have to have the lot lines drawn before we can turn it over to them. So we do have a particular interest in, in preliminary plat approval as quickly as it, as, as it can be done. I'm not gonna get into the, the details of, of the road structure and, and the, the way in which it's being done, but just in terms of the Forfeited Land Commission's interest, we wanna get the property back on the tax rolls as soon as possible, and to do that, the sequencing is important to us. I would be remiss if I didn't say that we have been just extraordinarily pleased and delighted with the cooperation we've gotten from staff, Mr. Blazek, Ms. Williams, Ms. Harden. Back when we were coming up on the December meeting of the Planning Commission, they were working, you know, you know, into the evenings through the day, right up until just before you all convened, I think, in December, trying to make sure that they understood how the development agreement worked, what the importance was of the sequencing, and how that would work, in order to make sure that, that your concerns were addressed, as well as being able to serve the development agreement, and we appreciate that, that cooperation. If you've got any questions about the development agreement or how that works, I'm happy to answer them.
Commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Pardon?
Asked for my, my address.
I thought you stated it.
Well, I, I'm with the law firm, Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd, and my personal address is 4734 Rinwood Lane, Columbia, South Carolina, 29206.
Thank you. Okay. No questions? All right, we now consider ourselves in public hearing. When your name is called, please approach the dais, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to comment. Our first is Lynn Wilken.
My name is Lynn Wilken, 40245 Crooked Stick Drive, Lancaster, 29720. So here we are with another 132 homes that's been approved or billed, but yet we lack police, fire, and EMS service in Edgewater community. I'd like to quote Darren Player, your county director of Lancaster County Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services. He stated that they used to get 1,200 calls a year, or three a day, but that volume has exploded tenfold. I also would like to quote your county administrator, Dennis Marstall, and I hope I'm pronouncing his name correctly. He estimates that Lancaster has five years or less before the fire services reach crisis levels. Residents will notice pockets of pain due to woefully inadequate response time. He also stated you will see the tragedies of full houses burning down before anyone can get there. Also, according to Mr. Marstall, the county is looking to create a countywide tax district to pay for new fire stations, which I believe will mostly serve Indian land due to their expansion. Miss, I, I can only hope that we can find a way to resolve this problem countywide. We have a volunteer fire department. Our station is not manned on a daily basis. All of our volunteer firemen work jobs in other cities. It takes time for them to leave their jobs to come and attend a fire. So, a question I have is how did the county find $90 million in their budget to build a new prison in the county, but lacked the foresight to see the growth, especially what transpired in Indian land over the last five years? Were no measures were taken to plan and fund the growth here? But you continue to approve more home site builds that the county cannot support with fire, rescue, police, and emergency workers. I think you seriously need to reconsider approving more residential build sites until you can address the lack of adequate services for the community. I've been in a house fire. I choose not to go there again. So, if you've never been in a house fire, let me ask you this question. Can you guys live with the fact that we have a fire in Edgewater where the houses are built so close together, and the possible loss of multiple homes and lives? Can you guys live with that? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Art Illareggi, Illareggi? Did it? I was rolling the dice.
I found it rather interesting that we had a developer in Lancaster.
Name an address for the record, sir.
Oh, what is my address? Old, old person here. 10243 Lake Shore Drive.
Name two, please, sir.
4.8 miles.
Name? Name as well, please.
Arthur Illareggi.
Thank you.
You had it right the first time. There we, oh, starts the clock. Okay, very good. We're at the end there on, on Lake Shore Drive of a 4.8-mile cul-de-sac, all right? We keep building homes, we keep approving, and I'm rather surprised that this particular developer, True Homes, does not seem to be involved when it comes to infrastructure. We know, boy, I've been amazed at hearing the numbers and how the lack of fire department, et cetera, et cetera. In the last 18 months, we've had five incidences that in that time, we have not been able to go in or out somewhere between Bethel Boat and the entrance to Edgewater for 18 hours all total. We had one just the other night on Wednesday for two and a half hours. Gentleman unfortunately passed away, but he could not be revived. They didn't even get to him for five and a half minutes. So I think that this is a good example of why we need more than one exit out of our community. We know that the growth keeps continuing, and although this continues, we have a county person here, or an attorney for the county, that wants taxes, money, bonds being caught up from an owner that has taken and filed bankruptcy in the past to be able to buy this property for as little as 50 cents on the dollar. I think that there has been plenty of money that has come through this area that 3,600 homes is not gonna get caught up off of, once again, that drive 4.8 miles, that is one big cul-de-sac. This young lady knows for a fact, because she's counted 24 cars just to try to get to work in the morning coming out of Flower Gate. Last but not least, because I see I have one minute left, I've gone back to the original plat maps, the ones that were filed back in 1995 and 1998. There is a way that they could extend out of the cottages right out of Bear Creek. That would come right down off of that side and hit the other side of the clubhouse. There's another one that they could bid off of Links 1 or Links 2, and that would connect over the Route 51. If you take less than 400 miles off of either Link, or, excuse me, 400 yards off of Links 1 or Links 2, you can be over to Flower Gate. Flower Gate can go all the way around and go all the way over near the dump. So we have many ways that we can get and be out of Edgewater, but it's only gonna happen if you folks sit there and make True Homes do it, because True Homes is notorious for doing as much as they can for as little as it costs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michelle Reichards? Well, she was on the list first.
He probably doesn't recognize me because I don't leave my house, like, ever.
I mispronounced some of the other ones, but I don't know.
No, you're good. Michelle Reichards, 40249 Crooked Stick Drive, I live next to Lynn. When I originally bought my house a year ago from True Homes, I planned from the get-go. I wanted this to be my forever home. This was gonna be the house I, I live in for the rest of my life and die in. Now I can't wait to get out. I am counting the days, because True Homes is an absolute nightmare. Beyond the infrastructure issues that this county does have a problem with that were already brought up earlier, there is only one road in and out of Edgewater as a whole. It is that State Road S. That is the only way in and out of Edgewater as a whole. That second road they're talking about doesn't resolve that problem. You still, all it takes is one bad disaster where everybody has to evacuate to see everybody get stuck. It's an absolute nightmare. Beyond that, there is also the issue of True Homes not being held accountable. When my home was built, the process actually went pretty well, but then, when I went into warranty, I started having issues. They had to send over a subcontractor four different times to fix tile issues in my home, because their subcontractor would literally cause damage as they were doing the repairs. I had a post-construction inspection done, and what did they find? Oh, they found that there was an entire chunk of one of my trusses missing. It wasn't broken, it was straight up not there. How did you guys miss this? How did the county inspector miss this? How did anybody who does quality control miss that? And not only did it take multiple months for them to address the issue, but once they even came over, they noticed it, and they said they were gonna address it, they did it illegally. They didn't have anybody come over to professionally say how to fix the truss, they just did it themselves, and they gave me and my family the excuse of, well, this is a basic repair, we don't need to have an engineer come over for this, it's not required. Great. I checked, Mia and my parents checked afterwards, and it turned out that was a lie. There is no basic approved repair. They were required to have an engineer for that at the time that it was done. And not only did they not have an engineer, they did not get the required, the required permits to do the work in the first place. Neither pieces were done. When we asked you guys, you said, yeah, neither, that it's required to have an engineer, and we do not have permits on file for when the work was done, and I knew the exact dates. I literally had to threaten their warranty department with, I have proof you broke the law, for them to send an engineer to check it out. And even after the engineer eventually And even after the engineer eventually came out, months later, I never got the original engineer letter from the engineer. He agreed it was done appropriately. I still, to this date, do not have the original letter because True Homes won't give it to me. They sent me an email, an electronic copy, and said, this will have to be good enough for you. It's completely inappropriate. I could stand here for hours talking about it. These people need to be stopped. They need to be held accountable to quality appropriate work.
Thank you, ma'am. Donald Reichards?
I think it's David.
Yeah, they're killing me.
Donald Reichards, 40249 Crooked Stick Road, Lancaster. How and why should I trust True Homes? They make a lot of promises and not keep, and not keep much of them. True Homes said Contender Development will finish the road at Cotabah Ridge Drive to Highway 200. But let's see and wait before we start another, another project. And Contender, and by the way, Contender wants to build another 1,400 homes in the area with the same 19, I keep hearing, 1998 standards. Wow. More stress and traffic on the roads that'll be there. And then on State Road, the only one way in, State Road 29, 296. Looks like it'll be another main entrance for, in the future, for Ryan Homes. Well, how many homes is Ryan Homes going to put out there? They're turning down the trees now, all on that one road. And this is past, this yesterday, we're coming back, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. The main road coming, coming in, there's a log truck tipped over on the side. I'm glad, I'm not glad it tipped over, but I'm glad it tipped over right instead of left because nobody would have got in for hours. It's ridiculous that, what they get away with. It's, it's, what is the county's responsibility or liability for more better roads and escape plan if we do have a major fire? One road is in and out. Because the county can't play dumb because it's been mentioned twice, three times, four times coming here. So I think they are going to be responsible. Let's wait and see until the roads are done before we start another phase. This is a health and safety problem. The planning department said their hands are tied. Go to, go see the county fire marshal. I talked to him. He says his hands are tied because of the, of the deal of 1998 codes. You know, True Homes, sales staff should tell every customer about the 1998 codes, but they still charge you a 2025 prices. I wish I could have a deal, not paying taxes or paying for the land until they get approval for it. I've been looking for a lot for a year now. All these track home builders are buying up all this property. You can't find a lot for individual home in Lancaster County. It's, uh, it's sad. And I've been in construction 40 years, and that was my daughter. And they do some very shabby work. And thank you, and I wish a building inspector, I talked to him, and you know what he told me? Go put a claim into state. State was not much help either. Thank you. It's up to you people, because you're a real asshole. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kristy Kozak?
Good evening. Kristy Kozak, 14504 Maritime Drive, Lancaster. I'm not here to address a road. It seems that you have a plan in place already and listening to it earlier, and listening to it earlier, it sounds like it just needs to be implemented and improved. Instead, I'd like to take a few moments and say why I like Edgewater, why I enjoy living there, why I moved there. It's community. And it seems that every time they put more homes into the community, they add more, more amenities for me, for my friends, for my community, so we can enjoy it there. When they added these homes recently, what did they do? They added another pool because they knew that it wasn't going to be enough for the last pool, so they added another pool. They keep adding in landscaping to make the community beautiful, and I enjoy that. I enjoy being able to, they're going to be putting in more pickleball. They're going to be holding events there. And this is nice, because I don't even have to leave my community to enjoy my home, to enjoy my friends, to enjoy my family. And I'm enjoying True Homes, and I'm enjoying what they're doing for the community, and it's beautiful. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I just want to say I enjoy living here. I enjoy Lancaster, and I love my home and my community in Edgewater. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Brian Blannick? Blatt? Sorry, sir.
Brian Black, 145049 Maritime Drive.
Uh, one more time into the microphone, please.
14504 Maritime Drive. We've been in Edgewater, my wife and I, she just spoke. We've been there two years. Everything is, you know, you have your up and downs. There's good things, there's bad things. There's happy people, there's sad people in the neighborhood. But all in all, it's a great neighborhood. I'd like to see the progression go because the sooner it's done, the sooner everybody's happy, the less construction. It is, progression needs to go. We need to see the community moving forward. We need to see everything. We have a vision, we see the signs, we see what everything's supposed to be. We have a new, we have a new, the golf clubs coming in. They've got new restaurants going in. They've got the pickleball courts, the racquetball. Everything's going in, and the roads are going to be built. It just, it's a beautiful place to be. I just would like to see everything being done so we can enjoy it, and the neighborhood can be a neighborhood without everybody fighting about who's right, who's wrong, when's everything's going to be finished, why is it going to be done? And if there's an issue with your home, that's for warranty. That's not just to hold over everybody's head. You have 500 good homes, you have two that are terrible. You have issues, you fix it, and you overcome it. That's it. I'm standing right in front of, I'm sorry. But I mean, that's basically it. I just, it's a good place to be. It's a good place to work, it's a good place to live, and I'm pretty happy with the people there. I met some great, wonderful neighbors. And it's just a good place to be. Positive aspect on a negative side. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sorry about that. David Reichard?
I just met some of my family. So I am the David Reichard.
Name an address for the record, please.
I am David Reichard. As, as we've established, my address is 4105 Crooked Stick. I am an eight-year resident of Edgewater and the cottages, and an architect. I've had 40 years of experience in planning and construction and development and designing, so I am familiar. I am asking you to postpone approval of this phase of development of Edgewater at this time. Because of the time, I'll, I'll try to be as brief as possible. Basically, for all the reasons that the Crestwood didn't get development, all those issues are a concern in Edgewater. Additionally, as other people have said, we have a new restaurant coming in, which hasn't even opened yet. We have new pickleball membership coming in. We have a nine-hole golf course coming in. There are developments that they haven't even laid the first foundation, haven't even poured the first road. The two other developments, or three maybe, are only half completed. Why start another one? Finish the others, build the roads first, and please evaluate the traffic that we're going to have from the, the open membership to the restaurant, to the golf course, to the pickleballs. It's worth repeating. We have accidents regularly now, and that road closes. Just the other day, as the fellow said, log truck fell. So just asking that you postpone till it can be properly evaluated. I don't know why you want to start another development when you haven't even finished the others. And may I ask the commission to just ask for a show of hands of those who are opposed to this development?
No, sir, we'll have a motion to vote soon.
I was told that we could ask that.
Not right now.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. No, we're not going to do that. Joyce and Robert Baker?
Mine's going to be real brief, but.
Name an address for the record, please.
I'm Joyce Baker, 26040 Apple Yard Court. I am opposing this, this new project. The, I've been told since we've been in the community since 2020 that this road was going to be built, and it just keeps being delayed, or I, I don't know what's happening, but we've been expecting it. We've had too many problems, too many accidents. And yesterday, yes, I'm not going to mention again about the logging truck. But it, I feel like True Homes is placing profit over people. I have multiple sclerosis, and what if I need emergency services? You know, that scares me. But we do need another entrance and exit into the community. I'm pleading with you not to approve this until that road is completed, and then more homes can be built. But the road needs to come first before any, before anything else is built. But in it also, we were told that the, this road just a short time ago would be completed in 2026. I don't know if that's a firm date, since we have, I've been told multiple times, oh, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. Well, it's five years later, we still don't have the road. So I really, I'm not feeling like that 2026 date. Whenever in 2026, I don't feel like it's firm. So it's just, that's all I have to say, but thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Michael Marsh?
My name is Michael Marsh, and I live at 25637 Seagull Drive, right there in Edgewater. My remarks to the commission and my fellow residents and friends on this night are not necessarily to persuade or to make light of issues brought before this body, but to bring balance to a discussion. After making a decision to completely uproot our lives in Cleveland, Ohio, in 2020, my wife and I spent well over a year searching for a place to live. We looked at well over 100 homes in different parts of South Carolina. We selected Edgewater for its sheer beauty, its location, and its promise. True Homes has proven to be a really great developer. Edgewater is a beautiful community surrounded by a golf course on a lake. True Homes has designed and built homes that offer a great aesthetic and built with quality materials. They have provided beautiful amenities. We made mention here tonight of the clubhouse, two pools, a pavilion down by the water, walking trails, ponds, green areas, a brand-new clubhouse with a restaurant that will open soon. What True Homes has already built has attracted some of the nicest people I've ever met from all over the United States. I've met people from as far away as California, Alaska, and New York that now call Edgewater their home. Many of them have expressed to me the reasons they moved here, all echoing the promise of a beautiful future living in one of the most up-and-coming communities in South Carolina. True Homes is building a truly beautiful thing here. The residents of Edgewater, however, live in a community that's under construction, a community that is transforming and growing. The growth will not be contained or limited to Edgewater community, but it will affect the city of Lancaster and the county as well. True Homes is at the forefront of that growth. As a growing community, the residents of Edgewater will experience inevitable pains, challenges, and inconveniences of the growth. We live in the midst of it, it's going on all around us. True Homes has responded quickly to issues. True Homes shows a commitment to the residents, the city, and the community at large. As residents who have invested in our homes, let's not lose sight of what brought us here, what draws new neighbors here. This community will not always be under construction. There will come a day when the construction is done, the trucks and heavy equipment have gone. That day, Lancaster will look very different. Edgewater will look very different. Our investment in our homes depends on that day. All residents in the community, the city, and county at large, we ought to partner with True Homes to see this promise fulfilled. Much more work and many more challenges ahead. Inconveniences lie ahead, growing pains lie ahead. Let's embrace them with courage and excitement. Remember what brought you here and prepare to welcome the new neighbors that have not yet arrived. Let's keep a beautiful thing going. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Lissandra Middleton?
Good evening. Lissandra Middleton. 25946 Apple Yard Court. So I totally agree with what Michael just said. It's a beautiful community. Never thought I could live in such a gorgeous space coming from New York City, where everything and everyone is on top of one another. But as True Homes continues to build, it continues to get congested. And I think that the congestion with having one way in, one way out poses the problem. Not from my perspective, not True Homes, because they built me a beautiful home for a first-time homeowner. And like the other young lady said, this is my forever home. I thought, I'm hoping. But as we witnessed over a couple of weeks ago, wildfires in California raised a concern for me. And as I attend the community meetings and discovered that we don't have a fire department, not like FDNY, they don't call 24/7. It's not a volunteer thing. They get paid to come put out fires. Just today, I heard that one of our neighbors was burning leaves, had the wind taking the amber somewhere. I don't know if we all be in this room right now. So that's concerning about the fire department. Yes, continue to build. We love, we love growth, yes. But make sure everything is in place to accommodate the growth. A fire department, more than one way in, more than one way out. And just like it's been said several times, the accident or the incident that occurred on Ruby Road in Bethel with the log truck, what if, what if EMS person was coming to save somebody having a heart attack? They only have seven minutes. If that street is blocked, that person is dead. There's no hope for that person. So I don't know. I have a pretty good idea what should be done. I don't have the finances to do it, but I can give you the suggestion. Open up a couple of more roads. Widen the roads. Because it's a shame, it's one way in, one way out, one lane. That, that, one lane in, one lane out. It, 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 it's not comprehensible. And yes, we do want the growth in Edgewater. It's a beautiful commi, uh, community. Lot of nice people from all walks of life, all different areas around the world. Time. Thank you very much. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Ms. Middleton. Does True Homes have a response?
I guess I would just reiterate again the importance of what this does provide as far as connectivity, as far as access, in providing an additional and immediate additional way in and out of the cottages neighborhood, where we have a number of existing homes, and eventually provides two additional ways out of the cottages. We're committed to doing our part of, of the Cotabah Ridge Boulevard. We understand the importance of it. As I said, we're working hard on those plans. We've got conditional approval on Phase 0. We're ready to get started on it soon as we get state's permit to do the erosion control on that, and then to roll right into Phase 1 as soon as, as soon as we satisfy all permitting requirements of the, of the county, as well as the state, and, and want to continue to partner with and, and encourage Contender to move forward with, with their portion as well. We understand the importance of that. We want that road as well, and so we're committed to that. And, you know, beyond that, I'll be, you know, I guess one other thing, and I got the opportunity to speak with a number of residents out here earlier today. opportunity to speak with a number of residents out here earlier today and, and some of the, some of the suggestions were more communication, more frequent communication. I joined True Homes about seven, seven months ago and, and I believe in that, I'm, I'm an engineer by training, I believe in the facts, I believe in sharing with that, I believe when people don't have the information, they, you know, either find it from the wrong source or, you know, assume and, and that's when, you know, that's not good for anybody. So we do put out a weekly, or not weekly, monthly newsletter with land development updates. I commit to adding some more detail on those, we've, we've, we've set forth a permitting schedule here, you know, it's already shifted a little bit from December, I wish it hadn't, but it has and we're, we're going to keep working on that, we'll keep everybody updated as we progress. And I guess from that perspective, yeah, any, any questions anybody might have, I'd be glad to try to, try to answer those.
I think we're out of that here, so thank you, sir.
Okay.
That concludes. Ma'am, you've used your three minutes, I'm sorry. That concludes our public hearing and we consider ourselves out of public hearing, pardon me. Commissioners, you have before you case SD 20240656, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second it.
Who was that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Tinklinburg. Any discussion?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Ms. Richards.
Just to correct, I have a new total, I've had to wait on 32 cars to get off of Flowergate Farm Road onto Bethel Boat Landing, so I do keep track of it. And I've said this before, Flowergate Farm Road, excuse me, Bethel Boat Landing was never meant to be the main ingress, egress out of Edgewater. We built a road, I actually did the work on the road to build it where it comes up through, where it goes from being a, the state maintained road to the private road, it was supposed to go through there and come out up near the recycle center. All the utilities are in there, I, I don't know why that hasn't been developed and pushed forth. I've also had conversations with the fire marshal, he is very concerned with the response time and just to let all of y'all know, you are paying higher homeowners insurance because of the response time for fire and EMS to get in there, so getting another ingress, egress in, in and out of there is extremely important. Flowergate Farm Road was never designed to handle that much traffic, it's not wide enough, it doesn't have line of sight. Where I come out on Flowergate Farm Road, I have a blind curve in both directions. I'm 59, not young, not old, but my 85-year-old father, I really worry about him coming out there because people come around the curves so fast, going in and going out. So having, still having said all of that, there is a planned development agreement that is, for lack of a word, older than dirt, that we are still legally obligated to adhere to. So puts me in a bad situation, but anyways, it's one of those things, but we do hear what you're saying and, you know, we're going to try to do what's best for the development of Edgewater.
Thank you, Shelley. You said a lot of what I was going to say. I appreciate every single one of you sitting in this room, I know it's been a very long night, so thank you for coming and, and sharing your thoughts and I, I sympathize with you. It is not always a comfortable place sitting up here, we have to make a lot of very hard decisions and I, like Shelley said, we are having to look at this neighborhood based on a very old UDO and, and an old development agreement that I don't necessarily agree with, I wish I could change it. But they did listen to our comments the last time they came before us, they, they added the drive that I specifically asked about and I appreciate, I, I, I see what you did and I do also appreciate the coordination for the main road and, and hopefully that, you know, continues so we can get everyone in this room what they need to feel safe in your communities because it also sounds like they love being there, so just, I hope that you continue to work through that with them so they're feeling like they're getting what has been promised to them, hopefully in a timely manner. But like Shelley said, we, our hands are tied sometimes and, and we legally have to look at, at the requirements of, of the agreements that have already been passed before our time and that unfortunately is the situation we're in tonight.
Sorry, there's the, this is not a public comment session?
Sir, sir, that has passed. Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Ms. Lou?
This is my first meeting as a member of the planning commission, so please excuse me because I have to ask questions that I don't know the answer to. I am appalled by what I heard tonight about the safety of people. And I understand that this ruling was 1998, I live in a community of 147 homes with one egress and ingress and egress, and I know that the rules were changed after, but my question is, and I don't mean to be flip or rude, if there's nothing we can do, maybe this is a question for staff, why are we here tonight hearing this? If there's nothing we can do? And please, please don't, please, I, this is from my, as, as learning, I'm just sitting here, I was thinking, well, there'd be a vote and we'd do what we have to do and I don't mean to upset the process, but it's a sincere question for staff, I guess, if there is nothing that we're allowed to do, if we cannot vote to do anything about it, why did we hear the case? Staff? Please don't, please, please.
It's not a question to the public, please. Sir, you're out of order, please. No, you are out of order. You are out of order, please, sir. You will leave and you will be quiet while you do it. Thank you.
If it's all right with you, okay. So all of us here are under some regulations and under some requirements. The planning commission is held to certain rules by the state law that apply to subdivisions. It's in chapter, it's title six, chapter 29 of the state law, which is the South Carolina Conference of Planning Act of 1994. That rule gives the planning commission final review on subdivisions. That rule also says that the planning commission has to act within so many days of an application or else the review is considered approved. So there are, sometimes you will see subdivisions come before the planning commission that are obviously not ready to go, but we are bound by the days that we have to do that. And at that time, staff will say, we can't recommend approval because, and we list out what we have. Because the planning commission is the last body of review for subdivisions, that means that the next step, if somebody doesn't like what's going on up here, is to appeal to court. In order to continue to give you the best advice, what we do is we give you the advice based on the law and based on the code. So the state law says you get review of subdivision within certain days and the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance, says that these are the requirements that you have to do for a subdivision. South Carolina state law also allows developers to set up agreements with local governments called development agreements that will hold a piece of property under a certain rule for a certain amount of time. Edgewater is the longest standing development agreement that I've ever seen in the state of South Carolina and I've worked in planning in the state of South Carolina for almost 30 years. We can't, it, it's very easy to sit here and say, that shouldn't have been done. And there's no one on our staff that would have recommended approval at that time for that kind of development agreement. Because not only did it hold us to rules that needed to change at the time, it continues to hold us to that and the way to change it is to break an agreement with the developer. The developer at the time was a different developer, but the agreements, the state law allows them to be passed on to others. We don't enjoy this position of this. State law also says that there is very few things that override a development agreement, but one of which is the building codes, the building codes and life safety codes, including the fire codes. At the time that the development started being developed, there was not a requirement under the fire code to have that second entrance for neighborhoods of 50 or more. That changed at the beginning of 2024. That is the newer part that the fire marshal has been applying so that developments have at least two connections when they come before you. The fact that those two connections all go through a network to one road is something that is, is regrettable and held, we are held to by the 1998 agreement through the council and the developer. On top of that 75-year development agreement, the state of South Carolina in 2009 did a retroactive permit extension during the recession that said that all permits that were active in 2008, 2012 were extended for four years and then they did it again in 2012 to 2016. So essentially, the Edgewater development agreement is 83-year hold on zoning that was in existence in 1998. We do what we can. Ms. Williams has been through the development agreement up one side, down the other, Ms. Williams is the one that put a stop work order on the developers that brought them to the table to finalize the Cotabur Ridge Boulevard drawings. That was the best and most that we could do at the time. Since that time, they have done what we asked. And as staff, when we say we recommend approval, we don't take it lightly. We only recommend approval because we have no points where we can say no. They have answered every question we have. Is it a great idea to have all these homes off one main road that's not finished out? No, it's not good planning. If I was there in 1998 when this was done, I probably would have stood on my head and screamed and given my best advice, which is, don't do that. But this is what we have to deal with until in such time in the future that the county of Lancaster separates itself from the developers of the Edgewater subdivision, either through contract dissolution or completion of Edgewater, we are bound to this by law. We are not happy about it either. But on the flip side of that, we also know that since, as, as, I've been here two years. When I got here, one of the first things they sat me down to explain was Edgewater. I said, first thing you're going to need to know is you're going to need to know about Edgewater. Second thing is Indian land, all of it. Edgewater was important enough for that to be the first briefing because we needed to make sure it was done well and it was done as best as we could for what we had, what we're up against. And we'll continue to do that, but we are here because the law says we have to give you something. We are here because we don't have any other things we can check off on a box that hasn't been fulfilled for a portion of the full subdivision. I think that's, does that answer your question?
And I'm not speaking to the audience, Mr. Chair, but I hope this helps everyone understand, it helps me understand why we went through this and what's happening and I hope that the excellent response from Ms. Harden helps some of the people who are here tonight.
If I may add in one more thing, we don't, we're pushing as hard as we can on our staff side to get those plans reviewed in a timely manner because there are times when we have, like currently, we have several vacancies in the staff reviewing departments for both building and planning and the like. We all know this is a priority review.
And please understand that my question was not to question anything about staff, I know how hardworking this staff is, but just for my first meeting, I, when it came to a vote, I didn't know what to do because I didn't understand everything that I do now understand, so thank.
We give you the best advice we can. If you were to all come up and say no, then the applicant would then have an option to go forward with a lawsuit.
That's what I, I didn't, wasn't going to say it, but that's what.
And I don't, I can't advise that, that you break the law.
Can I please say?
Ms. Tinklinburg.
Thank you. I just want to also add, you know, when they came before us, what, December, November, December, I'm sorry, I don't remember which, you know, we had the opportunity to give comments and, and so you can also help the design by providing, you know, our input, which they took our comments, we had that additional drive added. So while our hands are tied in a lot of these decisions, we are doing what we can, we're trying to listen and accommodate where we're able, so.
Very good point because, because we have to review it doesn't mean you have to review it and accept it as it was presented.
Exactly.
You can ask for additional placement, you can, you can direct the, the curvature of the road to go a different way if there's a, if there's something worth saving. You can help, you could show them that they need to do open space in a different way if there's a better plan or a better process. We have worked, staff has worked with them as well over the years and we've worked with, we work with everybody is the reason that, the reason that there's no lots on the corridor road between Van Wick and, and 521 on the Crestwind Plan was because our staff stood on our head and said, you can't have driveways out on collector roads. So we do our best to work with everybody as much as we can to make the best product. We don't catch everything, 100%, but I will put my staff up against anybody.
Amen.
Any other comments?
I'd like to say something too. I, I remember when the, the Lancaster Economic Development back in 1998, I remember there was a lot of things that I think slipped through the cracks and there obviously nothing we can do about it now. I do respect the staff and all the hard work that y'all put into it and, you know, as to the residents, I, it is beautiful out there, you know, and if there were certain things that we could do, we would. And all I can say is to the developers that I just hope you do the right thing and it sounds like you guys are trying to improve and listen to the, this is my first time here on board as well, but I appreciate the, the staff and the, the volunteers that, that come and make the recommendations and I, you know, just really hope that you guys listen to what, what your people are trying to say, that's all I have.
I have something to add and I'm going to say it to the commission members, but I want everybody in the room to listen. It's not the third time that Ms. Harden has explained this situation to me. I've had to listen to her tell me that her hands are tied about how far she can go, that our hands are tied how far she can go for something that happened 27 years ago. I was just out of high school at that point. We would have done something different, I would have done something different, the planning department would have done something different, it wasn't an option. And again, our hands are tied on it as she stated, that this would be a lawsuit if we turn it down. You vote how you want to, but just understand that I'm not interested in hearing it again. She has explained it too many times, too thoroughly, and I do believe that she feels for these people in this room, as do I. But again, our hands are tied, we do have to uphold to what the law says, we cannot beat that, it is written and I didn't write it, you didn't write it, you didn't write it, they didn't write it.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to interrupt, but just remember that I hadn't heard all of this before.
I understand, I understand.
This was, I mean.
I, I understand, Ms. Lou, it's, it's.
Naptism by fire in front of everybody explaining my ignorance and.
This is my first night as chair, but the point being here is that we, we're trying to do what we can.
Right.
We spent multiple sessions drilling True Homes as much as we could. I remember the discussions that went on like this for hours, that we tried our best to find a way to get them to push harder and we've done everything that we can.
Got it.
That's all I have to say about it. So.
I'd like to say something.
Ms. Henson, please.
The only thing I want to say is I, I really feel like 27, what was it, 28 years ago, whenever it was, 1998, was it, I mean, I'm sure that. I mean, I'm sure that nobody, including us, a lot of y'all are from out of state, but nobody ever thought that would grow and Lancaster County would grow like it has. Nobody ever thought it. And I'm sure that's the reason that they, that a lot more thought wasn't put into this. We've just always had a little, now I've been here all my life, and we've always just thought it was going to always be a little country town. Well, it's not. It's, it's a growing county and it's a good county. And if you go to a lot of the other counties in South Carolina, Lancaster County stands out. Truly stands out as an exceptional county in South Carolina, and I'm very proud of it. Not so proud of some of the stuff, but you know, that's, that's happened. But as I say, I don't think that the people that passed this, I don't think they ever thought it was going to be like this. So y'all work with us and, and try to, and let's all try to get through this together because we can.
No, sir. No, sir. Sir, out you go. Out. Thank you, officer. Okay, so we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Williams. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Amy.
That's okay. Judy Anna Tinklinburg?
I'm for.
Frances Lou?
For.
Sheila Henson?
For.
Lynette Henson?
For.
Sheila Richards?
Against.
Jason Cavalier?
Four. Motion passes six to one dissent from Ms. Richards.
Five to one.
Five to one? One, two, three, oh, there is, my apologies, five to one. Yeah, I'm one too many hash marks. Do we need to take a break here for a couple of minutes and let the room clear? Anybody need to stretch their legs? Anybody?
Make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Second.
Second. All right, raise your hands. Show of hands, Ms. Henson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, six to one, five-minute recess, clear the room.
Did you know she was packing up? We still have like seven things left.
She had a purse on and everything.
No, it's not your fault. I had the.
I know, I know, and I was, that was, that honestly.
I had the sign paper sheet.
Maybe in the lobby.
Thanks, God. My man right here, right beside him, you hear me? Next time I'm bringing up.
Okay, we're unmuted.
I make a motion to return to session.
Second.
Yes, that one is me. I'll back off the mic a little bit. So this is located at the intersection of Old Purdue and Camp Creek Roads. It's a 2.1 acre parcel. The intent is to develop a Dollar General on this parcel. The current zoning is low density residential and the proposed zoning is neighborhood business. The proposed neighborhood business zoning is located directly to the southwest of the subject parcel, which you can see on the map on the left-hand side of the screen. Here are two location photos of the site, the first being an aerial view showing the parcel at the intersection there at the crossroads. And then on the right is the subject parcel facing out from it, looking at the nearby Lloyd's Comedian Gas Station. Looking at the current use type being zoned for low density residential and currently vacant. The proposed zoning is consistent with the adjacent use types and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan designates this area as a rural future land use category, which allows for commercial at crossroads such as this crossroad. So at this time, staff recommends approval to rezone 2.1 acres from LDR to NB. I'm available for questions. I thought the applicant was going to be here, but they may no longer be here. They are here.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. Sir, please name an address for the record.
I'd just like to say first, I've been to a lot of planning commission meetings.
Name an address, sir.
I will never attend one that is the, so many new people, this must have been your initiation tonight, and you made it. My name's Greg Goojer. My address is 101 North Pine Street, Spartanburg, South Carolina, 29302. And I'm the developer for this project. Dollar General is what we do. We develop about $12 to $15 Dollar Generals in the state of South Carolina, $4 Dollar General per year. We've done other developments in your fine county here and have enjoyed an ongoing relationship with your planning department. We try very hard to find areas that are rural, underserved areas that have potential for growth. Gosh, we've heard a lot about growth tonight. So that we can bring infrastructure to those more rural communities so that you don't have to drive as far for convenience items. That's our whole goal. We're increasing the number of groceries, the healthy food that's in our stores. And all of that is done to serve the communities that are having to drive miles to get to convenience items. And this is one of them. This corner we found, although our parcel needs rezoning, we have other commercial zoning, our neighborhood commercial zoning around us. There's a convenience store directly across the street. We don't find that people drive very far out of their way to come to Dollar General. So we will not increase traffic in this area of your, of your county. We'll actually decrease traffic because people won't be driving as far to get staple items like, like food or diapers or, you know, necessity items once they got home. We're looking at accessing off of Old Pardue Road. We believe with feedback, we've already gotten some feedback with DOT. We believe that that's the safest place to have our access. And I'm available for any questions.
Questions from commission? Ms. Richards?
Not a question, but a comment. I used to build Dollar Generals. I'm a construction engineer and y'all, y'all, y'all have picked a good location here. I know the area well and y'all got a good business model about, like you said, finding those rural areas where there's nothing else to, to fill a very important need in a, in a community. And there's, there's nothing else out that way. So you've picked a good spot.
Well, thank you. One of the things I'll add, if you were working with the construction of Dollar General, boy, our model has changed over the years.
Yes.
This is a very modern building. It's polished concrete floors, so it's very easy to maintain. The old white tiles that you could never get clean are gone. The entire building is LED lighting. It's directional downlighting managed for the parking lot so that we don't have light leakage off the site. They, they've really upped their game. And so it's, it's a really nice building that we have planned.
I think I've used my quota.
We'll give you one more if you need.
I'm good. Yeah, I'm going to hold on to it then.
Okay. We now consider ourselves in the public hearing. When I call your name, please come up to the dais. You have, state your name and address and you'll have three minutes to speak. Up first is Buddy and Rita Teague.
Good afternoon. I know you, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, I'm, I'm short. I'm forgot.
Name and address, ma'am.
I have to reach for everything. But my name is Rita Teague. I live at 2719 Old Pardue Road here in Lancaster. All my life, 77 years in this particular area. My home place was Camp Creek Road down half a mile from the store. I live on Old Pardue Road. I'm the second, third house on the right on Pardue Road going to Zion. I have to ask you, Mr. Blasnik, how you pronounce your name?
Blazek, close.
Blazek, okay.
You addressed the whole.
A whole thing, okay. Well, he's one that brought it up, so that's the reason why. This is my first time to ever attend a meeting like this, so excuse me if I'm country because I am. But anyway, have you been out there to Camp Creek Road to the Five Points area?
Ma'am, you got to address us.
Okay, have any of you, you said you were familiar with the area, but have you ever been at the Five Point area with traffic? There has been numerous wrecks right there. I myself have almost got hit twice as I was bringing my great grandson home from school. And I come off Camp Creek Road, turn left on Pardue Road. Whenever you come off the other remaining end of Camp Creek Road, you're coming up a hill you can't see. Just recently, because the telephone people are putting fiber optic lines there. This car comes flying over that hill. I am pulling out. I had to slam on brakes so I wouldn't get hit. Also, whenever I'm taking him to school in the mornings, there is this GMC white truck. I have the right of way to turn right, but this guy turns right as I'm turning in front of me off of Pardue Road there in Five Points. This is a dangerous intersection to have a Dollar General store there. He was talking about the lighting. How light bright are those lights going to be? And is there going to be any concealing around the building to where my property aligns with Steve's property, Mr. Lloyd's property? Can I ask him a question?
Your time is used for addressing us.
Okay, but anyway, I don't want this there if it's going to cause more problems, which I think that it will. We actually need a roundabout there at this particular intersection to make it more safe for everybody. And like I said, there has been helicopters that's actually come out there to get people that have had a wreck in this area. Because you've got five roads that are joining there. Go down Camp Creek Road a little bit, you turn right to go on Pardue Road. It takes you to Zion Methodist Church. Camp Creek goes straight to 200. And all these roads meet right there with a lot of heavy traffic. And he said there won't be more traffic? Yes, there will because there has been. I've lived here all my life. And also, I'm out. Okay, I'm sorry. But I have enjoyed the meeting. I have learned a lot.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. Keith Sterling? Name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for hearing me. My name is Keith Sterling. I live at 1119 Potter Road and in Lancaster, South Carolina, 29720. My wife and I and our son moved here three years ago. We moved from New Jersey about 2005, spent a lot of time in North Carolina. We found our dream home at 1119 Potter Road. We looked around. We saw there was a Lloyd's there. I was like, okay, gas station, cool, no problem. We talked a lot about there not being much around us. We decided we liked that. We know we're going to travel to Charlotte for really good food. We knew we were going to have to travel outside of the county to get some things that we needed. We liked what we had there. We like that area. It's, it's country. But thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. That concludes this portion of the public hearing. So we are out of public hearing. There's no more citizens to speak. The applicant, Mr. Mr. Goojer? Do you care to respond to any of the statements? Come up, come up to the microphone, please.
I was gonna highlight where our access was, that we did choose the road that has a stop sign. And Kelly covered that more than having to answer any other questions.
Just real quick, she asked about the lighting.
Yeah, the lighting, lighting is so much better these days than it used to be. We used to put what we called blowhorns on the front of the store that were spot, basically big spotlights like you'd have at a football stadium almost, and shine them out in the parking lot and they would make it about a quarter mile down the road. And we don't do that anymore. All of the lighting is LED lighting that is in a case that shines straight down. And so we actually do light studies to make sure that, one, we're lighting our parking lot for safety and the exterior of the building and sidewalks, but also that light is not escaping off of the property. Now certainly, if you look toward the store, you're gonna see that their lights are on, but they're not gonna shine off the property like old retail places used to.
Thank you, sir. And I'm gonna spoke, this actually concludes our public hearing for this item. Commissioners, you have before you case rezoning 2024-2690. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And a second, is there any discussion, question members? Any questions, any concerns? All right, motion to approve is stated. Let's do a, a hand vote. Sorry, I'm getting tired.
You're too young to be tired.
I've been since four. Anyway. A show of hands to approve the motion. Motion is approved unanimously. Next item is conditional use 2024-2612. I don't have a name for who's on that one, but we have a letter to defer here. And I believe what I need is a motion.
I make a motion to defer.
A second.
A second. Show of hands for the motion to defer. Unanimous motion to defer. I think that's the way that works. All right, so deferred. All right, non to non hearing items here. Name renaming or new road name 2024-2744.
Our favorite part of the evening, no public hearing. These are administrative items. This first item is for a private driveway. The people who live on the driveway, there's two homes on this private drive. They're asking to be named so that they can be mapped with the EMS and Google Maps. This was not triggered by a third building permit, as many of these new road names are. This was triggered simply by a request from the applicants because they have trouble getting deliveries and getting access, so they're asking to be named. And this does not require a hearing. Does require a vote. So this is the two homes. The, the picture up there is the two homes that are currently located. On the left, you see there's a house on, at the front of the property that accesses off of Caroline Acres and then they've sold the two lots behind it. And that red line is basically what the private drive is going to be. And the picture on the right is looking down that private driveway toward the new homes. That's all I have. I'm here for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. Questions for staff? All right, need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Show of hands for a motion to approve. Motion unanimous. Next is new, new road name 2024-0679.
This item came to us from E911 addressing. This came from a commercial site plan. Sandra sent this to us. They've submitted their site plan and it includes a new driveway for this site, which is shown on the picture on the right, shows the site and how the configuration of the driveway. On the left is a diagram from their site plan that shows they're building some new buildings and that's gonna be the layout of their driveway and parking lot. Here for questions.
Any questions?
They want their driveway, a name on their driveway?
Yes, because they're gonna have three buildings with addresses. That triggers the requirement for them to name the driveway.
Any more questions? Commissioners, before you is a new road name 2024-0679. Do I have a motion? Show of hands to approve the motion. Motion is unanimous, approved unanimous. And we are on to other. Appointment of Planning Commissioner Representative for UDO Stakeholder Committee. Is that right?
Your current representative for the UDO Stakeholder Committee is Mr. Barnett. As Mr. Barnett was a, a previous member of the Planning Commission, but the Planning Commission can maintain him or take an option to put a Planning Commissioner on. Ms. Richards, have you had a chance to talk to your dad about whether he would be okay to be reappointed or continue appointment?
Continue to do.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, you don't have a, a term limit on this. This is just more of a keeping, since we have new people and we have this process going through. If you would like to maintain Mr. Barnett, you don't have to do anything. If anybody would like to change the membership or change the appointment to someone else, then we would need to have a conversation.
Do you have a motion to change Mr. Barnett's status? Is there a motion to change Mr. Barnett's status as the UDO representative stakeholder? Just to leave it the same? Does anybody want to change it, is what I'm asking. Is there a motion to change? Then we're not gonna do anything about it.
Fantastic. Yes.
Next is a review of next month's agenda. Ms. Jennifer, please.
So next month, we have two subdivision preliminary plats. One is Silver Run, which we were originally gonna hear tonight, but they agreed to defer. Another one is called Shadow Moss. It's another relatively small plat. We have two rezonings, both of them small. One is a couple of acres, asking to rezone from mobile home to, or manufactured home to MDR. The other is a small, about half an acre down off Great Falls Highway on the corner at the airport crossroads, where the grocery store, the Piggly Wiggly was. They had overbuilt some structures on the back of their property and they don't want to have to, to take it down, so they're buying some property from the guy behind them, but it's a different zoning district, so they need to rezone it so they can add it to their parcel and not be in, in violation. We'll also have a new road name list from Sandra. We've got a number of items on that. And that's all for the scheduled items. And we'll also have the Cogito Academy conditional use that's been deferred.
Any other administrative announcements? I'll get it out. Ms. April, Mr. Matthew?
I just want to publicly on the record thank you guys for this. I know some of them was your first meeting and it was definitely a trial by fire, but you all hung in there and performed exceptionally and I appreciate each and every one of you.
I just realized we cleared the room.
I'll back that up too. And I would like to thank everybody for being patient with me as my first seat in here as the chair, so thank you all. It really was good. May I have a motion to adjourn from someone? Raise the hands. Yep, that's good. All right. Thank you, everyone. Felt a little stumbly off the beginning there.
Where'd you get all them pretty $2 bills?